...budget study session. All council members are present. This is our first night, up to three nights, of going over the budget. And I will say, when we were sworn in back in December, the Vice Mayor told me that this was an evening that she was looking very forward to, hearing Mr. O'Leary give a report on the budget. So, we were anxiously waiting, but we'll first hear from our City Manager.
Well, I know you can't, I mean, you're breathless anticipation, waiting for Mr. O'Leary, but we do have several parts to the presentation tonight. And I want to, first of all, recognize and express appreciation to the City Council for your time and attention to what may seem like a routine, we have to do it every year, task, but this is one of the most important things that we as staff do and that you as the City Council do. Because the budget guides and our work program, it identifies and guides the work program, provides resources for the work that staff does throughout the year. It establishes policies and principles for operations and priorities. And it is one of the key information pieces that both staff, the City Council, as well as persons outside of the organization, the general public, and other persons interested in our organization, use to gain important information about a wide range of city activities, issues, policies, and priorities. So this is much more than just a compilation of numbers. And we hope that our presentations over the next several evenings and your discussions will be both informative and useful to moving the city forward into our next fiscal year, fiscal year 2018-19. Just before I get started, I also want to recognize and express appreciation to the large number of our staff who are here tonight, who comprise our department heads and many of our senior-level mid-management employees, who are critical to our delivery of your priorities and who have had a key role in developing and will have a key role in moving forward with implementation of this budget. And we have one new face in our audience this evening, right in the middle of the room, right smack dab in the middle of the room, is Steve Messick. For those of you who have not yet met him, is our new IT manager. Steve joined us just a couple of weeks ago and is getting up to speed very quickly with our IT infrastructure and the needs of the organization in that area. I know he welcomes your questions and any problems that you may be having with your The presentation, first I wanted to talk a little bit about the schedule. The Mayor mentioned that we have scheduled three evenings with you to talk about the budget, and I wanted to just review our plan for each of those three evenings. Although we have, in many previous years, not used three whole evenings for the budget study sessions, we do intend this year to need to request your participation in meetings on all three of the evenings. That includes tonight as the kickoff. Tomorrow evening, we will have one hour, or just short of one hour, prior to the regular City Council meetings, so that will be a fairly short study session. We hope to cover at least the majority of the Public Works Department operations, including enterprise operations, water, wastewater, stormwater, as well as the capital improvement program for infrastructure in those enterprises. Then on Monday night, June 18th, we've scheduled the third of three budget study sessions. We will have, I believe, depending on how far we get tonight, we will have at least a couple of departmental presentations to continue and complete that evening. And we have scheduled our financing team, our debt financing team, to meet with the City Council that evening to give you some information on, as you had previously requested, regarding financing options for a potential deployment of fiber to the home through our cable enterprise. So, we do have at least a couple of hours of material for you on Monday night, the Without further ado, our game plan for tonight is to give you our big-picture financial and operational overview as the first part of tonight's study session, and then to move to several of our departmental presentations. As always, we welcome your input and your questions. Please feel free to ask your questions during our comments, if that makes it easier for you to remember and to get an answer to, get a timely answer to a question. Or we'll certainly pause between presentations to make sure that we've covered any and all of the comments, discussion, or questions that council members may have. So if that works to your satisfaction, I will go to the beginning of our presentation tonight and talk to you about some of the, again, big-picture issues, objectives, and priorities that have guided the development of this budget. And before I go into the overall objectives that we've asked each department to address as they develop their budgets, and you'll hear some of their comments as we go through the operating departments, budget presentations, there's a continuing theme. And I like to think that even though it is a little bit repetitive from year to year, that the City Council, like staff, and hopefully the public recognizes that the work we do doesn't really know calendar boundaries, for the most part. So while we task ourselves and are required to develop an annual budget, that is kind of an artificial timeline associated with what is an ongoing work program to address both continuing as well as newly identified priorities as they emerge. On the slide in front of you are some of the big-picture objectives that you saw last year in the budget, that guided our development of the budget last year, and each of which has shown significant happy...
Marty, did you get a copy of the...
Oh, sorry?
Sorry.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, we'll blame you.
For anybody else who doesn't have it, it's up on the wall. And are we, is that being shown as part of your...
It will be.
Okay, thank you. So, again, these items, you've seen and heard about them before. You discussed many of these items at your March 21st, March 21st of 2018 Strategy and Goal Setting Session that the new City Council undertook in the first quarter of your service on the City Council. In general terms, these items guide the entire city work program and are key to many of the initiatives that we are working on, on an everyday basis. And I'll just make a few comments on each of these. You'll be hearing a great deal more about each and others as we go through the various presentations. Our Transit Corridor Plan, originally approved in 2013, in development a few years prior to that, is finally beginning to see some real exciting progress. As a Community Development Director, we'll discuss in more detail later this evening, we are at the point now where we're seeing private investment producing visible structures and results that demonstrate what the vision captured in our Transit Corridors Plan looks like. And very soon, we will see how it operates in producing more daytime as well as nighttime foot traffic and commercial activity in our downtown and in our commercial corridors. We'll see new residents moving into apartments and other dwelling units in very close proximity to transit, being able to walk to transit opportunities, and beginning really to transform the face of this community and modernize both our downtown as well as our central heart of San Bruno. Growing city revenues is a long-term strategy. You'll be hearing about this, I'm sure, for years to come, as the City Council continues to evolve its priorities and preferences with respect to different revenue categories that will allow us to stabilize our long-term revenue situation and hopefully not just simply stabilize the base revenue situation, but also to develop new revenues that will allow the city to address some continuing but unmet community priorities and needs as we move further along in the 21st century. The City Council is aware that we have embarked on a new use of social media and other means by which we're engaging with the community, in particular, and you'll hear more about this later this evening, our San Bruno Response Reporting Application, and our connection with assuring that residents' needs and interests are both received and responded to timely. We look to continue to maintain those connections, both in that manner as well as with our community events and our other strategies for community conversations. One of those key conversations that has been an important feature of the work program over the past year and that will evolve and continue in importance in the coming year is the community conversation around the development of the new Recreation and Aquatic Center. This has been an absolutely phenomenal opportunity to bring this community together, to look to a vision of what can be in San Bruno, to design this new facility, to imagine what kinds of programs and opportunities it can provide for future generations of San Brunons. I'm particularly struck with conversations I've had with our design consultants, with Group Four, who are literally blown away with the engagement that they've experienced with people from throughout San Bruno at various functions, at various community meetings. We have literally had more than 1,000, and I'm going to guess, well more than 1,000 participants in the online surveys, in the pop-up events, and in our several meetings. As the City Council knows, this process is moving to a conclusion of our first stage of the overall planning for the project, with a presentation to the Council on June 26th, which is right around the corner, so that you can receive a final report and approve, hopefully approve, the conceptual design so that we can launch into construction drawings and beyond over the next two to three years, when we envision being able to open the new center for public use and enjoyment. This is only one of the strategies that, or one of the projects, that is shaping the future of San Bruno. And as we continue to look at all areas of the city's activity and its growth and its continuing as well as its new needs, you'll hear from each of the departments about the types of challenges that are on the horizon, what we're doing about it, and what we propose for your consideration to allow us to continue to develop more proactive and resourceful strategies to address emerging community needs. We've, in terms of accomplishments, I'm not going to go through each of these, I just want to highlight a couple. And as the City Council is aware, without attempting to be boastful or to brag, I think you'll find a very long list of accomplishments that have been achieved over the past year in each of our departmental presentations. Again, all of them directed in some manner to the city's overarching priorities. But I think, and while many of these do represent continuation of prior-year activities, I think we're really on the cusp of being able to show some final work product in some really important areas. Number one, is our very long and somewhat arduous process to complete full rebuilding of all of the city infrastructure in the Crestmore II neighborhood, part of which was damaged by the 2010 PG&E gas transmission line explosion. That has been a very long, and as I said, arduous process to complete absolute transformation of the infrastructure in that neighborhood. While we wish we could do that throughout the city and see brand-new everything, we've learned a number of lessons in how difficult it is actually to undertake that kind of a project in an already developed and occupied neighborhood. We appreciate the residents' extreme patience and look forward to being able to dedicate the new park as soon as the end of this summer, and to fully withdraw all of our construction crews and close all of our accounts with the trust fund by the end of this calendar The, I guess I'd like to comment on one other item, without necessarily dealing with each of these accomplishments or any of the many others that are in the budget presentation, simply to say that while we are proud generally of our public safety staff, once again, San Bruno demonstrated what it's made of and the value of the preparation, the training, and the staff development that we worked so hard on, on an everyday basis. That was once again demonstrated in a more-than-clear way with the tragic incident, the active-shooter incident at YouTube in April of this year. At that time, our first responders deployed quickly and with using their training without having to think twice about rushing in to that very dangerous situation. Back of the house, we had people here at City Hall who kicked into action in the dispatch room, at the Police Department, and once again found ourselves in a situation where training, preparation, and commitment to this community was foremost on our minds and able to secure a very successful, very timely, and commendable response by this city. Again, this is just one example of the extent to which your investment in quality personnel who are trained and who are treated on an everyday basis in a respectful, professional, and capable manner shows the worth of that resource, that expenditure, and that commitment to our staff. Again, there's a great deal more information in this budget. I hope that you will take the time to take a look, and if you have any questions or you have any comments, I would just remind you that this is a proposed budget. That means that it is presented to you by staff for the purpose of your review, your consideration, and frankly, any changes that you would like to make. So if you see things that either need to be modified, if there are things that are missing, if there are things that you think shouldn't be in here, then I hope you will let us know, because once we've gotten, once we get through this process, we'll be preparing a final budget that represents your actions and your approval. And we'd like to make sure that that budget does accurately and completely reflect your interests and your priorities. So with that, I'll move to Mr. O'Leary, or I'll stop actually and ask for any questions or comments, and then we'll move to Mr. O'Leary on the financial overview.
Ready for Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I do feel pressured, Vice Mayor, so I'm gonna try to, try to...
I was gonna say, can he do as well in the amount of timeframe that she gave?
I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to inch up to your expectations. So, the, I think just the way in foundation is the council, I presented the last two quarterly reports, the third quarter and the mid-year budget update, and gave, in those presentations, some glimpse of the future for 1819. And I think the council had a robust discussion about revenues back on April 30th, and again, discussion about the current state of revenues and the levels of revenue. And I believe that my comments today, in large measure, reflect very closely the comments and the discussion and what was presented in those earlier relevant sessions. So, wanted to start by just talking about, and again, the focus for the next couple of minutes is going to be on the general fund, and really the most of today is going to be on the general funds, and we'll talk about the enterprise's public works in the future. So what I'm commenting on is the general fund. So, in front of you is the high-level summary of revenue coming into the general fund for 1819, proposed at $45,600,000. We're just gonna make a couple of comments on taxes. The driver for the 3% increase is the property tax, property tax revenue increase. And as we did last year, we have included in revenue in the general fund an additional $400,000 of E-RAF reimbursement. So the 3% on taxes is really driven by the E-RAF reimbursement in increasing that by $400,000 into the general fund, and just the growth in assessed value and the growth in property tax revenues. What I have done in the proposed budget for taxes is have reduced sales tax revenues by $500,000, reflecting the potential loss of one of our top 10 sales tax generators. So I have shown that reduction in the revenues. It would be my understanding that that's the conservative presentation at this point. I know there's discussion and hope that there may be a replacement, or there may be revenues at that source in 1819 because of some action. But at this point, I have taken that out of our revenue estimate. Just a couple of comments about franchise was kind of over-budgeted in 1718, and so it is, what we have in the budget is more reflective of what we're really expecting. The amended budget was reduced in franchises. Use of money, just wanted to mention the small decline in use of money in property is reflective of the next step of the reduction in the equity transfer that we're receiving from the cable operation. So that is the reduction there. Departmental revenues are really driven in a couple of areas. One is significant increases, and you'll see the revenue detail on page eight in the budget if you want to go there. But the departmental revenues, I'm sorry, both building and planning are up significantly in revenues, primarily related to the list of projects that are in the queue or about to be in the queue, going through the Community Development Department. Would just say, on the building side, generally when a building permit, the related inspections may not be done for a year down the road, because, just because we're getting the revenue this year and we're showing that revenue, there are related expenses and they don't all, they won't all be captured in this one year, especially with the magnitude of what is anticipated in San Bruno in the next 12 to 24 months.
Excuse me, Jim, can I ask for clarification on cable?
Yeah.
The cable doesn't come through a franchise?
It's always been, it's always been, I mean, we do get a franchise, but the equity transfer has always been budgeted revenue as use of money in property.
You still get the franchise?
We get the franchise, it's under franchise, but I'm talking specifically about the equity. And the equity transfer is the one that the council policy is to...
There's two parts of that.
There's franchise and there's equity transfer.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so that's $300,000 less that has been...
$200,000 reduction in 1718. And again, that's reflected on page seven in the budget.
If you could go back to the previous slide for a second. So, on the franchises, in a prior year, so we've been reducing, we've been gradually reducing the amount coming in from the Cable Enterprise into the general fund. In a prior year, there was, or in prior years, there was additional franchise fees. We were charging ourselves franchise fees on Internet services, which is not included in the federal law. In other words, federal law allows a municipality to charge a 5%, up to a 5% franchise fee on video services. We were charging, and we collect that directly from the customer. The franchise fee is a pass-through directly from the customer to the general fund. In addition to that, we were charging the enterprise revenues an additional franchise fee on other services, non-video services.
Everything other than video, which we were allowed to.
Correct. Well, we were just doing it.
Right, right.
I thought it was on total revenues. I think we were doing on total revenues.
And we were taking, back a number of years ago, we were taking 10% equity transfer. So you're correct that there was a reduction in a prior year to franchise fees. But there is also now, as we're continuing this process, there's been a reduction in the use of money in property where the equity transfer goes, so...
When we talk about the debt financing for cable, we'll be able to hear more about how that all happens, how that all occurred.
We can't, yes, we can, we can...
Is that money that we were charging?
Yes.
We weren't really entitled to take that money from the cable fund, and that amount is probably significant over all the years, and because there's significant debt on the books, that seems like it could be...
We can talk about that on the 18th, yeah. We can, we can talk about that on the 18th, yeah. We, our discussion on the 18th was also going to go to other financial issues associated with fiber to the home, so we can use that time. The, the other thing, what I wanted to point out here, though, is if you look at the difference between the estimated actual, the 1.455 and the 1.312 proposed, and, and the chart shows a law or a negative comparison from the estimated ending point for the current year and next year's budget. If you consider that we took, we deliberately took $200,000 out, you can see that the 1.3 would actually, if, if it weren't for a little bit of rise in the rest of the revenue category, that 1.3 would be a little bit less. It would be $200,000 less approximately than the 1.455. Does that make sense? In other words, there was a, there's a, a net decrease that's less than $200,000, and we took $200,000 out as compared to the prior year. I hope that makes sense.
It makes some sense. Well, I just wanted to make sure where the money was going, and fiber's really important to our community, and just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that it's not that it's a money-losing enterprise, it's, it's that it was funding these other things, the general fund, a big part, but we'll get to that.
Yeah, so we'll be talking about that, yeah. So this budget, Jim didn't mention it previously, but continues to include $375,000 of equity transfer. So while we've, we've gradually declined the amount coming in, there is still that much coming in.
The reduction from 575 to 375 in the 375 is the 1819 budget.
Is in that use of money in property.
And, and just for order of magnitude, council member, the, the cable television franchise in 1516, just to pick an amount, a year, was 426,000, and the budget for 1819 is 280,000. So it is-
That's the difference.
That's, that's the difference in, in the change from charging the, the franchise on all revenues, essentially eliminating the internet charge for, for the franchise.
Thank you.
Sure. So the general, general fund expenditures, again, you see the total in the column second to the right, $47,41,000. Again, just make a couple of general comments, and then be glad to answer any questions the council has. General government really includes the city council budget, finance, city manager, all the administrative departments. And the change there is really driven by the reorganization directed by the council and the voters, actually, for the elected treasurer position and the city clerk position. As you know, the, the treasurer budget was essentially eliminated, and most of the duties of the treasurer have been simply absorbed by the finance director and the finance department. There was an additional $35,000 budgeted expenditure in the city council budget for the recruitment costs in 1718 for the city clerk. So you, that, it's all clerk and treasurer related, it really explains the, the 1% reduction. Police and fire are a little bit more than the 3%, essentially because of MOU change and equity costs in the MOUs related to, to police and fire. Community development is, is down the 4%, really because there were one-time, one-time expenditures primarily for augmentation or supplemental staff on a one-time basis in 1718. And so when those are taken out, it, it looks like, it looks like a reduction. So those are the, those are the general changes that have, have occurred. But the direction from the city manager has been a hold-the-line budget, and as far as the base budget is concerned, again, just want to present confidence that the budget is in fact a hold-the-line budget, and is very similar to what the council has seen before. Wanted to just point, point out, taking two of the biggest categories of expenditures in the general fund, the regular and part-time salaries, again, because of MOU adjustments, the impact in 1819, it's a 3.5%. The CalPERS costs are, city contribution costs in the general fund to retirement is up 15%. And I just want to point out, the total expenditures are up 3%. So if you just do the math of the two big components, the 3.5 and 15, it does mathematically mean that everything else is less than 3%. All the other line items are substantially less than 3% increase looking year to year. Last year, I, I showed the general fund summary, because this is really the, this is the bottom line of the budget. I started with this last year, and I, just to see if you're paying attention, I changed the order here. So now, after talking about revenues and expenditures, this is the impact of the projected revenues and expenditures. And as you can see, the important numbers, let's focus on the 1819 proposed budget, skipping the, the first line, you see the total operating revenues of $45,600,000, total operating expenditures of $47,041, leaving a deficit of $1.4 million. When we had our meeting on April 30th, I actually projected that, that, that deficit would be $2 million. So in, in the preparation of the budget, we, we actually have been able to pare down, I think we were pretty sure there was going to be the deficit. But it, it is important to, to remember, again, when we're talking about deficit, what we're talking about is the gap between revenues and expenditures. And again, as we talked on the 30th, the, the budget that is presented to you today shows about $1.5 million less revenues than expenditures. And in order to balance the budget, we are recommending two actions in balancing the budget, and you are required to adopt a balanced budget. The first thing is to appropriate $932,000 from the ending fund balance that we're projecting for 1718, so 932,000. And I mentioned the $500,000 that we have reduced revenues based on the loss of the sales tax, sales tax generator, one of the top generators. So the recommended budget is, in addition to the use of the fund balance, that $500,000 actually be taken out of the general fund reserve to acknowledge the one-time significant immediate reduction of that type of sales tax. And I believe that is consistent with the, the use of the general fund reserve. So that, that is the way the proposed budget is, is being recommended into balance, offsetting that 1.431 in, in gap between revenues and expense.
Talk about how that was generated. Can you talk about how that happened?
Okay. The, I think that Sunny just pointing out, the, the ending fund balance in 1718, the middle of the three columns, is showing an ending fund balance in 1718 of $3.2 million. The, the primary driver for creating that fund balance at the end of June in 2018 is really cost savings, expenditure control, salary savings, the combination of day-to-day management of the budget and the expenditure levels, holding down expenditures to the level possible. You see the amended budget at 45.5 for expenditures, and we're projecting that the actual expenditures will be at 43.280. So it is that capturing of the fund balance that adds to the, the beginning fund balance for 1718 and creating that, that $3.2 million. By council policy, and again, this is leading to the recommendation to use a portion of that fund balance in order to, to balance this 1819 budget, by council policy, the general fund, fund balance, the target is $1.5 million. So the 3.2 significantly double the target for, the target for fund balance. So it is that target of 1.5 that allows for use of, the, use of one-time revenue in order to balance the budget. Any questions about the, the summary? So just the, went through and looked at the significant line items in addition to personnel. We've talked about personnel costs in the general fund, or about 75% of the total expenditure, between 70 and 75% is personnel-related, either salaries and/or benefits. And looked at other line items, and looked at the 1819 proposed budget in the general fund across all departments. And what, what the summary shows on these line items is, you see the line items where the aggregate across all departments are actually reduced, the majority of, of the departments are actually reduced, or the, the total of the departments is reduced for all utilities across the board. You see county service charges is down. In every instance, if you look at professional services, it's not quite as dramatic as that appears, because the $711,000 included one-time enhancements that occurred in 1718. So the, the, in each line, you can't say, well, these are solid reductions because we've had to eliminate one-time, one-time expenditures. But I think the point of this is simply to reinforce the notion that all of the line items across the board are increased by less than 3%. And this chart is, again, just giving a little comfort and understanding of how that can be where there are reductions. And I, I would point out just two of the increases, for instance, training, meeting, and conferences. Part of the increase there is in the police department for two training activities that are actually funded, will be funded by the San Bruno Community Foundation, and so we're actually showing revenue on the other side, but that's, there's not really $161,000 in brand-new, unexplained training. Again, that's $127,000 in the police department. And then tools and equipment, the increase there is primarily reflecting the budgeting of four marked police vehicles, which is a larger number than is in 1718, and that is the, the vast majority of the $195,000 increase is that, the four marked vehicles. Just, just wanted to point, point out that the, the question of expenditure controls has come up in conversation a couple of times, and just wanted to, I think the council well knows this, but may be worth hearing again, or being refreshed again, that the council, hopefully, at the end of June, is going to be adopting the budget for 1819. When that occurs, the city organization does not have carte blanche authority to just go out and spend $47 million.
Good.
That's, that's not the way it works.
That's good.
That's not the way it works. And I just, just summarized, just for the council's recollection, is all purchase orders and invoices are reviewed and approved by the department head, they're approved by the finance department, and ultimately, any of those items over $15,000 are approved by the city manager.
Could I intercede here for just a minute?
You can intercede.
I think the council, and perhaps members of the community, are well aware that the, by municipal code, the city manager's expenditure authority is up to $25,000. But you see here, city manager actually, what that actually means is that I approve items over $15,000. So nothing above $15,000 is approved below my level. That's the, again, based on the municipal code, $15,000 is the expenditure limit for a department director. So there, there's a very tight level of scrutiny. I'm sure that there's any, any one of the directors in the audience tonight can tell you about a situation where an approval came either to the finance department or to me, and it was kicked back, because we do actually look at them, we think about them, we make sure that they are being made consistent with city policy. Before I let Jim talk, start talking again, I, the slide says, and Mr. O'Leary said earlier, city council approval of the budget is just the beginning. The actual beginning goes back to the development of the budget itself. Departments are asked to, to propose expenditures that they believe are reasonably necessary on a hold-the-line basis to operate and manage their departments. The finance department goes through all of the proposed expenditures, they make adjustments, then the budget is presented to me for my review, and that is one of the primary things that I do, is to compare every single expenditure that's proposed to the prior year's actual, the anticipated work activity and needs of the coming year. And we discuss any discrepancies that I believe, or that the finance department believes could be adjusted downward. And again, if you asked any department here tonight, I'm sure that they could give you examples of situations where proposed budget amounts that may well be very desirable have not made it into this proposed budget. So, continue.
I could show you the scars if you really wanted to.
I have a quick question for you, Jim, if, if you have this information. For the utilities, the reduction in the utilities, that's pretty significant? Is that with our new LED streetlights, and, and what is that attributed to?
I think I'm, I should know, I should have found out. I don't, I don't know. Let me, I'll let you know tomorrow, okay?
So I, I did ask the public works department to, just on that topic, to take a look and see if we could generate a little report about the expenditure history with the new LED streetlights, because we did present that to the city council as, as an opportunity to recover the capital cost of, of making that change. And so in addition to better lighting, we believe we have reduced-cost lighting, but we'll be giving that to the, we'll be updating the city council on that subsequently. we'll, we'll be giving that to the, we'll be updating the city council on that subsequently.
Thank you.
But I can give you some more details tomorrow on that. Okay. So again, just, the city council, you know, just remind, the council well knows what items are on your agendas. The city council approves all agreements, contracts, construction, equipment, over twenty-five thousand. If there's any liability or workers comp claim payments that are proposed, over twenty-five thousand, again, the council acts. And I think more significantly, again, because of the, just the fact that position costs are a significant, you know, such a high significant part of the budget. I mean, just to remind the council that the recruitment for any position that becomes vacant does not commence, it does not start until the city manager has reviewed it. And again, can show the scars to validate the need for it at this time, can it be delayed? The recruitment does, doesn't begin. And job offers for the hiring of any employee is, requires the city manager to approve that. So, so the expenditure controls, in addition to the budget and the budget process are significant and I, I, let that stand. So the, sort of the last part that I guess I would like to just spend a little time about is the city reserves. We've talked about revenues and expenditures and we have up on the wall here, the four of the major funds that we have. And the general fund, I talked a little bit about that already and talked about the, the target is one point five million dollars. And in eighteen nineteen, if in fact, the council takes the actions recommended in the budget, the projected ending fund balance would be the one point five million dollars. It would actually be probably fifty thousand dollars less and I'll get into that in, in a little bit. But very, very close to that one point five million dollars. The general fund reserve is a reserve that the city council over the last several years has exerted great energy in building up and in maintaining this reserve. This is the city's fail safe reserve, the, the reserve of last, last recourse. And essentially, the target is twenty-five percent of budget expenditures is the, is the target by policy. You see, we are projecting that the ending fund balance for eighteen nineteen is eleven million five ninety-two. If we do the calculation for the expenditures as, as we are proposing, that twenty-five percent actually has a target of, of eleven million seven hundred thousand would be the required fund balance in, in the fund. And again, if you recall, in the current year, we had a fund balance last year that in some years, according to the policy, might have flowed into the general fund reserve. But if you recall, the bulk of that was used for enhancements in the current year. So the money that had flowed into funds that had flowed into the reserve in the last few years, that was not used to build up the reserve. So if, if in fact, the ending fund balance were be, would be eleven five, the, and the target would be about eleven seven. So the, we would end up at twenty-four point five percent rather than twenty-five percent if, if that's the way it actually played out at the end of the year. Wanted to talk about the general fund capital reserve. The five point six million dollars in fund balance is a little bit of an illusion because there are some commitments on part of that, of that reserve. We have actually received, I'm, I'm sure the council is aware, we've actually received the six million dollars from the PUC for the ultimate replacement of station fifty-two. In the current year's budget, in the, in the eighteen nineteen budget, we are proposing, that is in, it is in the capital budget. We're showing the six million dollars. The six million dollars has been put in the general fund capital reserve. We are then showing a million dollars being appropriated for fire station fifty-two for preliminary work on that station, leaving five million dollars still in the reserve. The other part that's a little less clear is there is an eight hundred thousand dollar balance on advance that was given from the capital reserve to cable for the Shelter Creek project. If you recall, the council specifically said that was to be set up as a loan using the general fund capital reserve. So the, so the reality is that there's probably about less than two hundred thousand dollar shortage in the general fund capital reserve. I think the importance is, that's probably livable, we're able to live with that. I guess just to, to remind the council though, that history anyplace would say that as you do capital projects, there oftentimes is in, in increasing costs once the real design is complete and, and the reality of the project, when the bids are done. And so one of the councils, one of the actions the council takes every quarter in amending the budget is appropriating additional funds for capital projects that are, that have been approved. So I, I think the point is we have very limited reserve to do that. So when, when we will be coming to the council and we may even, in the current year, we actually got ourselves, because we were adding additional costs to some projects, the council formally defunded three projects that were approved in parks and facilities. And we may come back to you at the end of some quarter to actually make some further adjustments. So the, the, the reality is the general fund capital reserve is a pretty thin line right, right now. And the emergency disaster fund is really the three million dollars that has been maintained. The adding to the three million dollars is merely the interest that is paid on those funds and that's added to the fund. So it really doesn't make any difference there. I mean, it, it doesn't, nothing has, nothing has been taken out or nothing new has been really added to the emergency disaster except for interest earnings.
Jeff, going back to the general fund capital reserve.
Yes.
The eight million that's showing in the current year ending balance includes the six million from PG&E.
Six, six million, yeah. And, and we're, yeah.
And so, so before that, we were at two million with a target of eight million. Have we ever hit that eight million target?
Yeah.
We, we were there.
We, at, at one time, when the reserve was first set up.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I, I, you can debate this reserve in different ways. It was seen to me, and I guess I just would want to point out, I think, the difference between the capital fund reserve and the general fund reserve. I mean, the general fund reserve of eleven, twelve million dollars, that is set up and the intent of that is to always be there. I mean, that's your, that's your savings, that's your emergency monies and so forth and so on. The, the general fund capital reserve, the, the intent is not to put eight million dollars in there and squirrel it away and save eight million. The purpose of the eight million is, is to spend it.
Spend it when you need it.
Spend it when you need it on projects that the council is a priority that you want to do. So, so the reality is it, it was up to eight million dollars, but because of commitments and requirements and priority action of the council, it, it has been diminished. But it's, I think, important to look at it differently than, well, why don't we still have that eight million dollars? Because that's not, that's not really the.
I always thought of this particular reserve as a funding source for our ongoing maintenance, for our building upkeep, for, you know, major, major capital projects that we, that we want to save up for. So when we need to replace the roof on city hall, we have money there for that. And so I think the eight million is dramatically small for the types of expenditures we're going to have. And as we started talking about the new, the new rec center and the ongoing maintenance of that and, you know, so I think we let the old one go for a long time and it, it shows. And so as we start looking at new facilities that, that are coming online and maintaining our older facilities, I think we do need to have money put away somewhere that we're going to use for that. And so if it's not, if this, that's not the intent of this reserve, then I do think we need to start budgeting somewhere for those kind of things that, that are, I mean, they're, they're coming. We know they're coming. We're just not planning for them.
Yeah. I, I think, no, I, I, this has been the source for doing projects that are of a maintenance nature that you're describing. I mean, is, is a reality. But I mean, I think the, the general, I mean, five years ago, there was nothing remotely even close to the general fund capital reserve. So I mean, the city council, I think the city is very conscious of what you're saying, but the ability to just set money aside is a challenge.
Would be desirable on a, at least a periodic, if not annual basis, is desirable. And that, by city council policy, would be funds available from the year end balance. The year end balance is being used in a different way and it still is maintaining the one point five as the minimum in the general fund reserve, the general fund operating reserve. But it's not sufficiently large to also be sweeping money into, to be building back up the capital reserve. So that's one of the things that the finance director's comments are intended to point out to the city council is whether that fund should be building up to a much larger amount or whether eight million is sufficient and we all understand that it's going to be spent. There's very little available to be spent against what is a fairly large need or potential need. I mean, we're, we're, we are able to handle it this year, you know, on a, on a, kind of on a limited year for year basis, but that doesn't address the issue that you're suggesting.
I want to echo what Councilman Salazar is saying here. If it wasn't for PG&E, would be in a different story with the six million. So the way I'm looking at it is our reserve funds, even with the PG&E money, is down seventeen percent. And we have no current means of filling that bucket back up. And, and the subcommittee, and I see that it's going to be addressed at some point, has put together some ideas. It's just, I think it's the reality of having an older city as, and, and unexpected things that occur, you know, with, with, with our infrastructure, that we have to find a way to build up those reserves and, or at some point, very little's going to be there. So as we look forward to have these more additional enhancements of, of a supplemental budget, it's, I look at, at my, at my household, if my savings went down seventeen percent and I got some money from an uncle for whatever reason that was able to fill this in, I need to start thinking about more cuts because the revenue, I'm not making more money. So I, I think it's something that the council, I mean, I like that you're bringing it up too, that we need, we need to take care of our facilities and, and we got fifty million to build a rec center and if we didn't have that fifty million, we wouldn't have one. So it's, it's a challenging time. We're in the middle of a, of an economy that's booming and, and we're not seeing the, the revenues increase anywhere near anything. Fortunately, the housing market's booming and, you know, everything goes up, everything comes down. So I just wanted to share that, share that. And it's, I know you guys are doing, working really, really hard and it's, it's just a reality that we have to face, that, that things get more expensive, but we don't have the current means to, to bring those revenues in and we have to work harder on that part.
Just for my, if I have this correct too, usually on the use of the fund balances, the carryovers, if we had those and didn't need those for the next budget cycle, then they would be going into the reserves, would they not? And that's where we were able to in more flush times, have those monies go into that. So I guess, and I don't want the answer now, but what I'd like to know is when was the last time that we were able to not utilize all of the fund balance for the next budget cycle? And if it goes back so many years, my, my concern is, is that at some point, if all positions are filled and all things are, are costed and expenditures go out, then in essence, we won't have that. So we're going to find ourselves in a, in a larger situation, rather than just the five hundred thousand dollars, it could be greater than that. So just as, I'd like to know that.
We can get that.
Thank you.
We can verify. I, I believe it was sixteen, seventeen was the last time that there was funds added to, to, to the reserves, but we'll confirm that tomorrow. And I, I guess just, I mean, I don't want to pile on or say the same thing again, really, but if, I mean, I think one of the, what I felt was important, what I said on April thirtieth was, when we were talking about revenues, was that, I said that the city had a significant problem potentially beginning twenty twenty-one, something like that. I said, we would be able to present a credible balanced budget in eighteen nineteen without turning ourselves into pretzel, I mean, I mean, that, that we could come up with a credible program. I think that's what we have, is it the ideal program? Is it the ideal budget? The ideal budget would be revenues would be greater than, but this is a credible budget and I think a substantive budget with the reality of the revenues and the expenditure requirements of the organization. So the next, just wanted to summarize and again, after the general council discussion a couple of meetings ago, there was that, that April thirtieth meeting, a subcommittee was formed and I think Connie wanted to just make a couple of comments on the city council or the, the subcommittee conversation about revenues.
Right. Following the April thirtieth city council discussion regarding revenues, the subcommittee consisting of council members Medina and O'Connell met and identified some ideas that may represent both near term and a, and a little bit longer term strategies to address new revenues, to situate some of the issues that we've just been talking about as well as some of the other unmet capital and operating priorities that are continuing to be important to the council and to the community. First, the subcommittee recommends that the city council and the community embark on a comprehensive community discussion facilitated by persons who, who are in this business who understand how to, how to best engage the community into productive discussion with tangible outcomes. That discussion would not be about any specific tax or other revenue strategy, but rather about what is the community's interest and vision for itself. I think what the, what the committee talked about, but was what does the community look like five or 10 years down the road and what will it take to get there? That may be, those results could be confirmation of the strategic direction. That may be, those results could be confirmation of the strategic direction that the city is proceeding on and the revenue shortfall, so the new revenue needs that are associated with that, and/or it could identify some changes to that vision and direction and revenue and expenditure needs associated with that, with that particular vision. Again, this would not be a discussion around, that we more commonly understand as preparation, public education and information around a particular ballot measure, a particular tax or revenue initiative that might need approval by voters or by property owners, but rather a broader discussion about where this community sees itself being a number of years hence, and what will be the revenue and other resource requirements in order to get there. From there, the subcommittee envisioned being able to move to a more precise community conversation. That would be the one that is more commonly understood to be a public education and information initiative around certain identified revenue items that would be proposed for voter or property owner approval, consistent with the requirements of law. Most of those larger dollar amount items being tax measures that would require voter approval either at the 50% or the two-thirds level at the ballot box. And as the city council is aware, we, we are not conducting an election in 2018. The next general election for, and that would include an opportunity for a tax measure to be on the ballot would either be in 2019 or 2020. So there is time for those sequential discussions. And again, the subcommittee recommends taking the long view and preparing comprehensively and carefully for what we hope would be ultimately voter acceptance and approval of whatever items the city council might ultimately decide to place on a ballot. In the meantime, the subcommittee talked about what they refer to as low-hanging fruit. And I guess I would, I would more, I would differently refer to those as short-term strategies. And even some of these are really not, well, some of these are neither really revenue strategies per se, but items of areas of regulation and interest that may have revenues associated with them. They were included on our long list of items for city council consideration at the April 30th revenue discussion. These include a program that would allow, that would overtly allow Airbnb or vacation rental opportunities to be pursued by individual property owners in the community with both a regulatory strategy attached to that, as well as a business license or other type of fee that would be associated or a transient-oriented, a transient-oriented tax, transient-oriented tax, a TOT that would be imposed on those operations that would allow the city to gain some revenue associated with that, with that private property owner activity. Depending on what that looked like, it may require a business license tax or a TOT, could require voter approval, and may not therefore be entirely short-term. But again, the, the committee continues to recommend pursuing that as an initiative. Similarly, the subcommittee was interested in pursuing sooner rather than later conclusion to the city's longstanding review and potential consideration of fees and taxes on marijuana operations within the city, given the voter approval of Prop 64 and the, the newly, uh, new legalization of activities within the state of California. Again, not necessarily a really short-term strategy, but again, looking to this item to be brought forward for further discussion with the city council sooner rather than later. The city council has also recently discussed increase to our standard $38 fine for parking violations. Staff is beginning to look into how such, how and whether a general law city can actually increase that fee on its own initiative, or whether some sort of other approval is required. So we anticipate bringing back that to the city council within the next several months as well. And then lastly, and again, there's been ongoing discussion, or related to that, there's also been ongoing discussion regarding parking meters. This is in the potential of realizing revenues for stronger regulation and enforcement of parking in our downtown areas, both in our lots as well as on our streets. There's obviously numbers of different types of parking systems that are available for purchase or lease by private vendors. And staff is beginning to look into those to compare notes with other communities up and down the peninsula to get information that would allow us to provide a more comprehensive report back to the city council about whether and to what extent there may be a revenue opportunity in that program. And then, as was also discussed by the city council, there was strong interest in looking at, at the revenue subcommittee, in looking at how we might change our business license tax. And again, this would require voter approval if we were to proceed in this direction. But looking at how some other communities are taxing large office-type businesses, in other words, not retail or commercial businesses, but office businesses such as those that are currently housed in the Bay Hill Office Park on a payroll or number of employees basis as opposed to on a gross receipts basis. And as the city council knows, some of our very largest office-type business operations in San Bruno have a very high number of employees, a very high headcount, and very, very large payroll for their operations, but not necessarily a high volume of gross receipts generated out of business activities in San Bruno. So that, that may be an opportunity for further evaluation. And again, that was something that the revenue subcommittee looked at and recommended. So we're not looking, this is a study session tonight, we're not necessarily looking for the city council to authorize the specific work on, on any of these items, but wanted to give you a heads-up about where the subcommittee is, where that discussion has gone so far. And we will be looking for subsequent action by the city council to direct more focused work on each or all of these items, particularly those that relate to the near term. That would be the comprehensive community discussion and then any of these or all of these short-term strategies. So unless there's any questions, we'll move on to the very last part of this overview presentation, which is the...
Could I just correct one, answer a question and correct something that is, it bugged me that the utilities was, it was supposed to be order of magnitude in the proposed budget. And the simple answer to your question is, there's a typo in that 572. The actual number is 752. So...
A little transposition of the numbers.
A little, the five and the seven. Not that, not, not that bad. So that, that was, that is...
So that's a much smaller decrease.
Yeah.
I'm just going to give you a very high-level summary of some of the supplemental enhancements that we're proposing for this year, similar to previous years. And again, this is an area that includes a great deal of scrutiny. We do not simply pass through those items that departments present. This is certainly not a wish list, per se. It's a careful and thoughtful evaluation of new equipment, supplies, and personnel, and primarily personnel, to provide services at the level that the city council and the community are expecting. The total cost of the supplemental requests across all departments and the enterprises for fiscal year 1819 is just over a million dollars, a million zero seven two. General fund amounts are $873,000. On the next slide, you'll see a summary of these items. I'm not going to go through each of the items in any detail right now, but allow, could you click this one? But allow each of the departments to identify what is being recommended through their department and the reason that each of these items is considered to be important enough to be presented for your consideration tonight and as we go forward. And then lastly, in the, these are the ongoing and primarily personnel-related items. Then there are one-time items that include some one-time staff, primarily in the community development department, and then a couple of, of one-time costs associated with equipment and supplies. So again, I'll allow each department to review each of these items with you, and we're happy to answer any specific questions, if you have any now, I'm happy to take them, or if you'd like to hold your questions on the supplemental proposals. Until the departments have an opportunity to present, we can certainly accommodate that as well. And that concludes our overview comments for this evening. I might suggest that you may want to take just a very short break, and then I'm going to ask the police department, the fire department, and the community development department to join us at the table. And we have presentations planned for you tonight on each of those operating departments. So we're, we're mixing it up a little bit, not going through the budget book in the order, the order presented, but allow you to hear from somebody else besides myself and Jim for the rest of the evening.
Okay, let's take five.
Thank you.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and get back and call the meeting back to order? I know our police chief is prepared and anxious and excited to go ahead and present.
Thank you. And good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Mayor and city council members. In 2017, the San Bruno Police Department responded to approximately 83% more calls than it did in 2012. This increase was from 24,000 calls in the, in 2012 to 44,000 calls in 2017. Our requests for services ranged from noise complaints, parking complaints, and resolving, resolving neighbor disputes, to investigating complex and serious violent felonies. As in other cities in the region, we occasionally experienced spikes in specific types of crime, including gang-related activity and auto burglaries. Calls for service during the past year have included an active shooter and several serious vehicle collisions. With the support of the council, the police department has been able to accomplish a great deal over the last fiscal year. The implementation of both body warrant and patrol car cameras is complete. This was a very large project, and staff has done an exceptional job of ensuring both its success and its sustainability. The department has even identified its own funding source to maintain storage of video for the next three years. The usefulness of the camera program has already been realized on a daily basis in a vast reduction in the number of complaints and more effective and efficient prosecution of crimes. Nowhere was this more evident than the value it contributed to the investigation of the YouTube incident. Although the Office of Traffic Safety grant funding has not been available for the last year and traffic enforcement staff is minimal in the department, the department has made a concerted effort to keep our roadway safe from those who would drive impaired. This effort has included specialized DUI patrols, a DUI education campaign in collaboration with Cappuccino High School, seeking to educate new drivers, and working with Mothers Against Drunk Driving to effectively reach and educate the public regarding the impact of impaired driving. Further specialized enforcement efforts include compliance checks and prostitution investigations at massage establishments, participation in the county's gang and narcotics task forces, and continuous collaborative partnerships with city, county, and nonprofit partners to address parking issues, issues associated with homelessness and human trafficking. The department recognizes that we are better together and has made a concerted effort to address issues such as parking, traffic, and health and safety concerns in collaboration with other city departments, including fire, code enforcement, public works, and community services. The department also understands and appreciates the value of a well-trained workforce. We've worked hard to comply with state-established training standards and are in the process of completing a long-term, sustainable training plan. Thirty members of the department have completed crisis intervention training, and the entire department has completed de-escalation training. This is in addition to required perishable skills training, including CPR, first aid, firearms, driving, defensive tactics, and updates and new statutes in case law. Unified command training in conjunction with the fire department has significantly enhanced our ability to manage critical incidents, and again, we saw this pay dividends in April at, at YouTube. The members of our department truly consider this, consider themselves part of the community, and we strive to look for opportunities to engage with residents in a positive and meaningful way. Not only at police-initiated events such as Police Day, Coffee with a Cop, National Night Out, and Tip a Cop, but also at events sponsored by the city and other city departments or local community groups, including Community Day, Community Day, the Posey Parade, Operation Clean Sweep, concerts and movie in the park. In the schools, we enjoyed participating in the Big Lift Program, and we're fortunate enough to have one of the Big Lift Programs adopt the police department. Day of the Child, we participate in service club events and local youth sporting events. Our bicycle patrols and robust police reserve and explorer programs, as well as our partnerships with the Citizens for Crime Prevention Committee and neighborhood watch groups go a long way in promoting our efforts in this area. Despite our best efforts and our desire to remain engaged in the community, the department assumes a primarily reactive role in providing law enforcement services to the city. Personnel continue to be our most important and valuable resource, and staffing continues to be our greatest challenge. Depending on what population figure we use, San Bruno employs between 1.06 and 1.1 sworn police officers per 1,000 residents. The recommended national average is between 1.8 and 2.1 sworn officers per 1,000 residents. In 1975, the San Bruno Police Department was comprised of 52 budgeted sworn positions. Today, we're at 49. And we're fortunate that a handful of those are either funded, fully funded, or subsidized via external sources. The impact of staffing struggles is felt throughout the department. With just one traffic officer, we are unable to provide an appropriate level of traffic enforcement in the city, and this is evident in the 496 traffic collisions we've responded to in the last 18 months. Our, our presence in the school is limited as well. Although we have a dedicated school resource officer, there are programs that we simply cannot provide, such as gang education training. And while we do our best, we also do not satisfy anti-bullying other campaigns. Our emphasis understandably is primarily on safety and emergency response in the schools. We, we have difficulty maintaining a proactive approach to quality of life issues, such as gang-related activity, street-level drug use, prostitution, human trafficking, burglaries, thefts, and issues associated with transient populations. It's difficult to absorb absences in the schedule due to scheduled vacation, sick calls, family leave, or vacant positions caused by retirements and resignations, and there continues to be a reliance on mandatory overtime. Maybe the most significant impact with regard to staffing is its impact on retaining highly qualified personnel. The department has been very selective when hiring new officers. In fact, many individuals who were not hired in San Bruno have found employment in other agencies. We're very particular about who we hire. The result of this is that we have a well-trained, highly motivated workforce that's extremely effective. However, this motivation results in a desire to be proactive and really feel like the work that's being done is making a difference. As young motivated officers see neighboring agencies of similar or smaller size employ more proactive programs, such as traffic enforcement or neighborhood enhancement teams and school programs, they become frustrated and begin to look for agencies where they feel they have an opportunity to make more of a difference, rather than simply go from call to call. A reliance on mandatory overtime is also understandably... A reliance on mandatory overtime is also understandably, or also understandably results in a level of dissatisfaction. Staffing issues extend beyond sworn personnel, and although, as I've described, there are needs throughout the department, staff has determined that its most immediate need is a dispatcher position. The responsibilities of a dispatcher range from answering nine-one-one calls, emergency phone lines, and non-emergency calls as well. Dispatchers multitask while handling those phone calls. They also operate a variety of communication equipment, including the radio, telephone, and numerous computer systems. They are the first point of contact for people who call the police. Dispatchers' work often places them in the middle of life and death situations, and requirements and trainings for these positions are stringent, rigorous, and unwavering. With only six dispatchers total on staff, it breaks down to about eight thousand calls per dispatcher per year, which is about six to seven calls per hour. Each call can take anywhere from five to ten minutes, and shifts in the San Bruno Police Dispatch Center include one dispatcher at a time. These staffing levels are no longer sufficient with the dramatically increased call volumes and expectations. Dispatchers not only manage the radio, phones, and numerous computer systems, but dispatchers are also responsible for administrative and records duties. These items range from entering stolen vehicles, towed vehicles, restraining orders, moving citations, stolen property, and acknowledging and sending out county-wide teletypes. Dispatchers handle county countercalls for service after records personnel go home. The industry standard for a department the size of the San Bruno Police Department is a minimum staffing of two dispatchers twenty-four hours a day. Our current staffing level allows for a second dispatcher in the dispatch center for three hours per day. In addition to this being an officer and public safety issue, it also presents logistical problems for when a dispatcher has to use the restroom or take a lunch break during his or her ten-to-twelve hour shift. Oftentimes, we use per diem dispatchers or order in a full-time dispatcher simply to cover a lunch break. We do enjoy a virtual dispatch relationship with the Burlingame Police Department, and this has proved extremely valuable during incidents like YouTube, Burlingame's ransomware incident, or other significant incidents such as large fires and traffic collisions. However, our agreement with Burlingame stipulates that we will not rely on one another for extended periods of time absent some types of exigency or critical incident. Furthermore, the minimum staffing levels for the Burlingame dispatchers is two per shift. While the addition of one dispatcher in our dispatcher will not allow for two working at all times, it will dramatically and significantly decrease the amount of time a dispatcher is working alone. As part of the submitted budget before you, the Police Department respectfully requests, as its sole enhancement request, for fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen, the addition of one full-time dispatcher position. We do however, look forward to an opportunity moving forward to address broader challenges that current staffing levels present. Despite the challenges I've described, the men and women of the San Bruno Police Department remain well-motivated and share a genuine concern for the city and its residents. We strive to be productive and active. Over the last year and a half, staff has issued three thousand five hundred traffic citations, over twenty-one thousand parking citations, and processed over six thousand two hundred reported abandoned vehicles. We've seen residential burglaries drop by fifteen percent and auto burglaries drop by thirty-nine percent over the last year. During the same time period, robberies have dropped by fifty-five percent. The Police Department budget, the Police Department budget before you tonight reflects our continued efforts to contain costs and reduce expenditures wherever possible. For example, the closure of El Cristal School has allowed us to substantially decrease our need for crossing guards, and you'll see a reduction there. The proposed budget also includes an effort to support and promote the city's ongoing work plan and initiatives. Police Department is excited about the future of San Bruno and eagerly anticipates upcoming development projects and programs. We continue to strive to remain a strong partner in the progress of the city. We recognize that the city's growth and success will include a greater demand for police services. Additionally, it's anticipated that the type of demand for services may change as well as increase. In preparation for these challenges, the department has embarked on several approaches, including continuing to deploy a data-driven target enforcement plan that focuses enforcement efforts based on documented primary collision factors in areas susceptible to collisions. While we may not have the personnel, at least we can leverage technology to help us. This coincides with the commitment to safety that's listed in the city's work plan and initiative. We'll continue to work collaboratively with allied regional and county agencies to address quality-of-life concerns, including homelessness, prostitution, public intoxication, street-level drug use, and human trafficking, to coincide with an emphasis on improving downtown aesthetics and safety. We'll continue to train personnel in crisis intervention training and send the whole department to a mindfulness training to better equip personnel and enhance our level of service, again, to contribute to our engagement with the community and to provide for their safety. We will work side-by-side with state and local law enforcement agencies to reduce criminal street gang activity and property crimes in the city as well as throughout the county. We will employ our bicycle program on a seasonal or part-time basis as personnel allows, in the downtown area, the mall, parks, schools, to address issues associated with the homeless population, enhance community policing, and provides for special events. We have embarked on a grant-funded project to conduct assessments and associated training and emergency plan development for critical infrastructure sites, both public and private throughout the community, and we're looking forward to completing that in the next fiscal year. We also look forward to upgrade our police communications capabilities by replacing aging infrastructure. That'll be proposed to you as a CIP project and funded via the Equipment Reserve Fund. We strive to remain as open and transparent as possible by keeping the public informed through the use of social media, SMC Alert, San Bruno Cable, and local media outlets. Finally, as a department, we recognize the need for a committed effort on succession planning. We are actively recruiting for one vacant police officer position. We have two candidates in background investigation, which we hope will be successful. We have one recruit in the police academy. We anticipate the retirements of two sergeants over the next few months, and we're aware of three officers that may soon be leaving us for other agencies. A recruitment for those positions will initiate when we receive notice of their departure. Finally, we have one dispatcher who recently resigned and are actively recruiting for that position, as well as a police clerk position. We have, we do have two officers out on long-term disability, which does impact our staffing, but it's important to remember that succession planning is not simply filling positions with warm bodies. Rather, it's identifying the most qualified individuals for these positions and working on developing their skills so that they're prepared to assume leadership positions in the future. I'm extremely proud of the work of the men and women of the San Bruno Police Department. I'm excited by the amount of talent that exists within the ranks. The challenge moving forward is retaining those who will serve as our future leaders and fill gaps with individuals possessing the same potential. The Police Department appreciates your support and that of the community. We continue to maintain strong response times for emergency calls for service and manage our resources as effectively and efficiently as possible, as our mission of providing safety and service to this community is paramount. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer or address any questions.
Thank you, Chief.
Questions from council regarding the budget or comments?
I have a question. You have your goals and objectives, and on the, I guess it's number one, two, three, four. The fifth one, it says facilitate and conduct a joint critical incident training exercise with the United States Marines. What's that about?
So based on incidents that have occurred in other parts of the country, especially at military installations, we're the only city in the county that has an active full-time military base, so we've reached out to the Marine Corps and Securities Homeland Security grant funding to better prepare ourselves to respond to a critical incident at their particular, their particular base. It's kind of a difficult situation for us. It's one of the few areas that we're going to respond to where there's actually armed individuals on the premise, and it would be, would be better served if we were more closely aligned in being more familiar with how each of us were going to act should something bad happen at that, at that site.
Okay. Thank you.
And the critical incident. Protocols are being, are also being utilized with grant funding from the community foundation, right?
Yes.
In partnership with the Fire Department. We're going to expand that Homeland Security grant learning and opportunity to work with other premises in the community with a similar kind of approach.
Yeah, our goal is to come up with a blueprint or a nice model that will provide some consistency in the, in the way we respond to critical incidences at some of the more critical sites in the city, and this is not police-centered. It's a public safety and actually would include several city departments. We do have some grant funding to do that at some local public sites and are talking with some private partners in the community who seem very willing to, to fund efforts there. So we're trying to build some consistency that would provide us with a, with a template or a blueprint that we could apply to each site in the city that we identify as a critical site. So when we do respond to those locations, then not only will public, the public side of the House all be on the same page, but the partners that we work with out in the community will also understand what to expect and how that process will work.
Great. Thank you.
Were there questions or comments from council?
We got one.
Marty?
Sorry. Four community service officers. We have, I think, let's see, a total of five. The use of part-time CSOs to fill in the gaps and to bring the, I guess, the awareness of the parking issues that some neighborhoods are facing. I know, I know we brought up a potential residential parking program, but I would, I was wondering your thoughts on, on how we could use part-time CSOs to kind of deal with the ramp-up as we're, we're working towards education and enforcement and how that would be a possible tool instead of hiring full-time staff?
Yeah, so there's, there's a little bit of a misunderstanding or misconception about the community service officer position. Not every community service officer is a parking enforcement officer. In fact, we use them throughout the Police Department. They serve as our evidence officers, they serve as our court officers, they serve as our digital evidence officers, so they assume some pretty crucial roles within the, within the department. They also manage our vehicle fleet in conjunction with, with the courtyard. We actually rely heavily now on two part-time CSO positions, which we're in the process of filling, because we just moved part-timers into full-timers, to supplement our, our parking efforts. So while we do have full-time personnel dedicated to parking, we wouldn't be as successful without the two part-time positions that we have. So we're always looking for opportunities to enhance our parking enforcement. However, there's a revenue component to that, and while street sweeping or timed parking or dedicated parking enforcement, we, we see a return on that investment, even though that's, that's not our sole purpose for conducting parking enforcement. It offsets the cost of enforcement. Looking for other types of violations that are not as specific may not offset that cost as much. So simply having individuals drive around the, drive around the neighborhood, looking for people parked in a red zone or people parked on the wrong side of the street, we, it's difficult for us because it's not a program that we can implement knowing that we're going to see X number of citations come back as a result of that effort, because we don't know that. It's similar to our abandoned vehicle program now. We have, because of the demand for abandoned vehicle complaints, we have one community service officer that basically is dedicated to that three days a week. And I think I mentioned we processed six thousand two hundred abandoned vehicles. About nine percent of those are truly abandoned vehicles. And so what's happening is we're, we respond to every call, just like police officers respond to every call. But the, the actual enforcement action that takes place on those abandoned vehicles is, is small, even though there's a, there's a lot of labor involved. So the same thing, the same thing would be with, with that type of parking enforcement. So it kind of depends on what you're enforcing, I guess, is, is the answer to the question. If we have a systematic program for what, what we're going to enforce, and we know that there's going to be, there's an identified problem, and we know that there's going to be an enforcement option that's going to address that problem, sure, I think that'd be great. I just think clearly identifying that or setting up those parameters would be the challenge.
I had a question about using the San Bruno Response App to report a car that's been there for seventy-two hours. So if a resident, I had this happen to me this weekend, where I pulled up a vehicle, people got out with suitcases, loaded it up to another vehicle, and they just left. And so if someone were to use the app and take a picture of the vehicle which has a date stamp on it, would that be sufficient evidence of the start of the seventy-two hours of enforcement?
No. The, the enforcement officer has to go out, if it, look for an odometer reading, if it's not a digital odometer, somehow mark the, mark the car or identify that it, that it hasn't moved, because if the car moves a tenth of a mile within that seventy-two hours, it's, it's not, it's not an abandoned vehicle. We're talking about, and again, that's another misconception about the, the intent of that statute. That statute is truly designed to remove abandoned vehicles from the roadway, and we're not talking about vehicles that are necessarily abandoned. We're talking about vehicles that are just parked for a long period of time. So it's, it's a difficult dilemma, and, you know, sometimes we get calls on individuals who come home for the weekend and park their, you know, clearly a vehicle they use at work on Friday, and a neighbor's upset and calls, and they want it, they want it towed by Monday. So we do get all kinds of interesting, interesting calls, but a photograph with a date stamp would not satisfy the legal requirement for us to tow the car.
To cite the car?
To cite or tow the car.
Okay.
And the original intent of that state statute is to remove vehicles. The city ordinance allows us to cite vehicles, but it's all based on the premise of an abandoned vehicle, not necessarily a parking enforcement effort. So that's the, that's part of the challenge or part of the dilemma that we run into with people understanding the purpose or the intent of that statute.
My last question is regarding the evidence property on Catalpa. I think I brought it up in the Revenue Subcommittee of, a number of years ago, I recall hearing that, how many of those records are there? Are we making progress to, to starting to clean that out?
Well, it's actually a very organized and, and clean site. There are some records up there that we'll never be able to purge, and we are not making any headway as far as looking at what records we can purge. It's just a labor-intensive effort that, that there has not, there has not been a significant dent made in that, simply because the personnel is just not available to do that. It's a monumental task, and there, you know, we've looked into other options about storage. We could pay for storage, but, but there are simply a great deal of records up there that will never be purged because we're required by law to, to retain them.
Forever.
Homicides, some sexual assaults, some other types of serious felonies, we're required to retain those forever, yeah. And, and people think of a file as, as like this. Well, sometimes when you're talking about a homicide, you're talking about eight, ten, twelve boxes worth of, worth of documentation, so it's not. When we have a discussion, sometimes it's easy to say, hey, why don't we just do this? But in reality, when you actually sit down and, and look at that, sometimes it takes a week or two or several weeks to purge, you know, one case, just a time-consuming effort.
So taking those files and not purging them, but, but packaging them up and putting them in a, a custom-built storage container, and then taking that container and putting it in a secure area, bar parking lot, is that an option, or have you guys looked into that?
The only, we've looked at what other agencies do, and there are, they, there are other agencies do pay for storage. I'd be a little wary about putting it in a parking lot in some type of Conex box or something like that. I think right now we have an alarmed, you know, solid building that we can, that we can kind of trust the, the security of, and I'd be, I mean, I'm open to moving them or looking for other options, but I don't know that putting it in a Conex box in a parking lot would be the best solution.
You know, where the evidence area in bar parking structure, it's fenced off, and it's right next to the police station. I was thinking of finding a way to kind of enclose that and put gate fencing and security alarm on it, and then the Conex box would be in there in an alarmed area with the fence next to the police station. I was thinking.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess we could, I guess we could look. I think you're talking about where we, where we store vehicles for evidence, and I, I mean, we wouldn't be able to put a Conex box inside there. We're really strapped for space. So I mean, if we found some other type of security, I'm open, I'm open to alternatives. I don't think that would be a viable one, but I think that we, if we found some space that provided adequate security and, and it was space that we didn't need or use, yeah, I mean, I think that, that's, it's, it's not an ideal situation for us either, the way that it's set up.
Right. It's away from you guys and.
Well, not that we need to be up there every day, but for us, it's just a matter of security.
Okay.
But what's the cost right now, right? I mean, it's, it's not costing us a lot to maintain that current facility. It's a city-owned property.
I don't think it costs, it doesn't come out of the Police Department budget.
But, yeah, I mean, that makes sense. Not if you're pulling out of basketball court, yeah.
No, no, not the basketball court, but that, that property, at some point was a house of some kind. It's probably worth seven, eight hundred thousand dollars, I'm guessing.
It's, yeah, it, I don't know the, the appraised value at all, but I.
If not higher. I mean, they're, they're knocking down houses in other cities. If not higher, I mean, they're, they're knocking down houses in other cities and, but it's something that, it's, it's an asset that the benefit of it is that it's being stored, storage facility that we could find another place to move that to and then we're getting property taxes from that building and then we're getting people that are going to be living there providing some housing. So I, I think it's something that, you know, if we don't put a plan together, then it's going to be there for another 20 years, you know? It's, it's a valuable piece of property. It's an asset and the city should be looking at finding ways to maximize the return on every asset that we have as we're looking forward of, we need, we need, we need to be more creative. That's my point.
There's also a gas main that goes down properly too.
That gas, that gas main is not functional from my recollection of working here. Yeah, that big 30-inch line is no longer operable, operable coming over the hill and going down. But staff has figured it out.
Friends, yes.
One question just regarding dispatchers. So I know, I mean, that's an intense job, right? I mean, and have you thought about, you know, you're looking for one person, but are you thinking about maybe two part-timers?
So.
And that helps kind of cover the, cover the vacations, cover sick?
So we, we do use what we call per diem dispatchers. And the, the challenge we have with per diem dispatchers, with our six full-time staff, this sounds not as compassionate as it, as it probably should, is we can order them to come and work. For hourly or per diem dispatchers, they, they pretty much work at their own convenience. So when we have those holes or gaps in the schedule, we, we, we offer it to our full-time individuals first on an overtime basis, just so we're not violating any MOU issues.
Right.
And then if it's not taken by full-timers and then it goes out to the per diems on strictly a voluntary basis, if the, if the per diems choose not to work it, then unfortunately we have to order full-time staff in. So that's the, that's the challenge that we're, sometimes it's an hour lunch break and we have to order a full-time staff member in there paying three hours just to relieve, you know, because somebody's sitting in a dispatch center for, for 10 to 12 hours. It's frustrating.
And, and then with the virtual, is there other discussions with other cities regarding covering? I mean, if Burlingame only is interested in certain kind of unique situations, is there anybody else that's interested in helping out on a, on a regular basis?
So I think, I think the, I, I don't think we're going to find a, any other, so first of all, the, the, and the council made this decision several years ago, investing in the technology to create this relationship. It's proved to be extremely valuable. It, it's a force multiplier at the drop of a hat for both cities and we've seen both cities be the benefactors of, of that. But we do have an agreement that we're not going to take advantage of it and we're not going to do lunch breaks, we're not going to fill shifts. So the, the Burlingame just always has two dispatchers in their communication center. The only time that we'll really take advantage of it is in the middle of the night. If our dispatcher has to use the restroom or something, they'll cover for a few minutes. But we've, we've kind of made the commitment that we're, we, and that was a discussion when this first got started, that we weren't going to really abuse it because it is such a valuable relationship that we don't want to take advantage of it. So that's where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you.
Couple things, chief. So currently with us in the school districts, we have two high schools within our community, Peninsula and Cappuccino, and obviously we have the San Bruno Park School District. Are any monies received for our services to the school districts or having a full-time officer?
No, the city pays for 100% of the school resource officer.
In other communities, is there funding sources that the, the districts provide to other cities?
I am familiar that with the, the Samatay Union High School District, which Cappuccino falls under, is, I believe they subsidize school resource officers with the city of Samatay. And we'd be, we'd love to entertain a discussion with them to, to do a similar, do something similar here, but so far that has not gained any traction.
I, I think we're somewhat unique and not, not the only one, but in this community having two high schools that obviously do take quite a significant time from our staffing, not only the community, not, not only the school officer, but as well just in general. I mean, I was at graduation and how many of our folks were there for Cappuccinos? So anyway, that's just a, a thought that I, I want my colleagues to know too, is that when they ask what do we do, how are we providing services for our schools, that is truly a costly one. Statistics, you gave some statistics just now as far as where we were there and where we are now. I'm wondering is, are those available or do you provide those for the web or for, for the community at large to know kind of where we're at? It's easy to sit back and say it's 10 times worse than it ever was, but based on what? Perception, based on stats, based on facts? So that's why I was asking.
Yeah, as far as crime statistics, you're.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so if you go to our website, we have, we have a crime map that you can put in your own timeframe, choose the type of crime. It's all available on our, on our website where you can actually pull up, up until, you know, real time. You can see the calls for service, what types of crimes have been, have been reported and actually create your own time periods for what you, for what you'd like to, like to see. So that's all available, all available online.
I think the mayor is asking though whether the statistics that you just cited, the number of banned, abandoned vehicles processed, the numbers of calls for service, the increase in calls for service, are those statistics available? The decrease in home robberies?
Yeah, no, the only, our traffic statistics are made available on a quarterly basis through our quarterly traffic report, which is available to the public. But as far as coming up with these specific statistics, you'd have to go in there and set your own parameters on our, on our crime map to, to do that. So they're not laid out the way I've laid them out here.
Well, maybe we can help educate too and we can discuss that, or what's appropriate.
Sure.
Then finally, obviously I do like the aspect of the succession planning. I think that's something that cities have to do and I know in public safety, not just here, but throughout the county. We have a lot of retirements upcoming, especially in the command staff at various agencies. So I think everybody's starting to feel that. I also want to bring up again, that I've already said it once, I'll say it again, is that I want to make sure that our hiring process and practice are current, are the, the best to get the best and that we're competitive and we can compete with the other agencies that when they offer and they have contingents, offer and jobs at our graduations, that we can, we can play and actually be as competitive as they are to get the best talent possible. So I'd like to see that worked on.
Other questions, comments?
Just, I think, as, as the mayor pointed out, is the statistics are pretty, pretty important and a couple of notes that I took down were that there were 83% more calls. And that's, that's a tremendous, that's a huge number. And if we don't communicate that information to the community, then when these decisions get made about increasing staff and why is it costing us, then, you know, it, it helps support that, that information as well as the 15% reduction in burglaries. So I think, and I also wanted to say, I think, just in general, that I appreciate the work that you've done. I can't tell you the amount of events that I show up to, that you're there, you're very supportive, the communication that you put out there. I've seen the communication and the connection with the community far greater than I've ever seen in our city and I think you're doing a tremendous job, so I wanted to point out that as well.
Thank you.
So chief, I, please chief, I think that council's concluded at this point and so on behalf of the council, we want to thank you and please take back to your department for all that they do and the service they provide our community.
Thank you.
Fire chief?
Yes. Honorable mayor, members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to provide you with an overview and an update on the programs and responsibilities of the fire department. As you're aware, in 2016, we were tasked with the transition back to a standalone department after several years of working toward a shared merger with the Central County Fire Department. At the beginning of this fiscal year, we had an interim fire chief in place with two interim battalion chiefs and three interim captains. Once the fire chief position was permanent, we were able to make those VC and captain positions permanent as well, and I'm happy to say that for the most part, that transition back to standalone is complete. Overall, we promoted three battalion chiefs, one of which was the fire marshal and four captains during this fiscal year. In January, the command staff got together for a planning meeting. In addition to laying out operational, planning and prevention goals for the year, we came up with three key initiatives. They consisted of succession planning, technology and innovation review and policy update. Succession planning continues to be a key focus since three-quarters of our department has less than five years with the city of San Bruno. During this year, we've hired six firefighters, five of which were lateral hires who had a combined total of 40-plus years of experience. And so obviously that allowed us to fill some of that, that void, that experience void we had in that 10-plus-year range of firefighters. Additionally, we have three captains that are working through the acting battalion chief process and six firefighters working through the acting captain process. Succession planning isn't just about preparing employees for the next level. We also need to maintain a paramedic program to support three ALS advanced life support apparatus. And additionally, we need to maintain a cadre of trained truck company-trained firefighters. And I'll talk a little bit more about that process when I get to training. Technology, we're continually trying to evaluate our technology to improve operations, communications and efficiency. Some examples include creating a, a process to upload and store photos taken in the field and use, you were using available software to evaluate emergency response, responses including response times, number of calls and other factors. We're also just began evaluating our current record management system. The current system is 20-plus years old and limited in, in the functions it can provide. Some of the things we'd like to look at and evaluate are programs that can integrate prevention, operation and administrated, administration. Some of the benefits we, we're going to eventually look at is an improved inspection program, including a tablet-based inspection form that can be completed in the field, the ability to create reports and follow-ups for issues like hoarding and chronic violations, and the ability to run reports regarding emergency calls, staffing and training to better evaluate the proficiency of the department. We're continuing to update our, our policies that were developed in partnership with Central County Fire. The command staff is working on modifications so that they can be reviewed at the city manager and city attorney level as well as the firefighters association before we can implement them. Operationally, we do continue to see an uptick in call volume, both from EMS and fire-related calls. As I previously mentioned, we have a young fire department, but one that is filled with enthusiastic and energetic firefighters that are highly motivated to train and improve in their, their skills on the fire ground. We continue to evaluate apparatus needs and maintenance options to operate on a cost-effective basis. For example, during the last budget, council did approve using the older truck 51 as a reserve for, for when the new truck was either out of service for maintenance or when we needed to train new firefighters. The initial plan was to build a temporary structure at Station 52. However, we were able to evaluate a partnership to share that truck with a, with a neighboring agency and I'm happy to say that that, right now, we have a pilot program that truck is being stored in another department and can be used by us and them and that ultimately resulted in not having to spend that $50,000 that was allocated in the capital budget. We continue to, worked with facilities management to maintain our two aging fire stations. The staff does a good job in doing minor repairs when necessary. Station 52 had a sewer line that was mitigated during this budget cycle and we's also recently completed an upgrade of the fire station alerting system for both stations. The previous system was 20-plus years old and quite antiquated. The new system has improved alerting and sound quality and it also has a touchscreen ability on the apparatus floor and is designed to function when, when power's out. Training continues to be a major process where they're teamed up with a trained paramedic before they can be considered a standalone paramedic and work independently of another paramedic. Operating a tiller truck requires a certain amount of training, both for the specialized equipment the apparatus carries and as well as the driving aspect of a tiller-drawn aerial, which is needed obviously in the, in San Bruno streets. During this year, we completed training of four truck operators with, with third, currently training three others as well. Just some additional other training I'd like to highlight. As Chief Parperina mentioned, unified command training with the police department, which improved, resulted in improved communications at, at the UT Benson as well as fires that we've had and other large scale instances where it's a combined response. I've noticed firsthand that crews are, are, the first, crews will check in with each other and work cooperatively to mitigate those instances and I think it's been very valuable. We'll continue to do that. We sent staff to a comprehensive truck operations class as well as a comprehensive vehicle extrication class, which included response to electric vehicles, which if you paid attention to the news, those are a concern. And we've had multiple, taken advantage of multiple training opportunities through the regional training and development consortium for public agencies, including an officer who's starting the 200, 2018 Public Sector Leadership Academy. And just a note on training, when we do send staff to these training, the expectation is they bring that information back and train other staff. As you, you may have witnessed recently, the people that we sent to the truck, or I'm sorry, the extrication glass came back and provided training for each shift, as you can, you may have seen the, the torn-up cars in both of our parking lots after that training. We also continue to implement exposure reduction programs and procedures to limit firefighter exposure to carcinogens. Increased rates of cancer for firefighters is a major focus of the fire service on the national, state and local level. We're doing our part in Samatay County, implement policies to reduce those exposures. This is an ongoing mission and we'll continue to examine best practices for exposure for prevention. Fire prevention and life safety, as I mentioned, we have a new fire marshal as of January. Fire prevention continues to see an increased workload with the current development climate. The department continues to complete all mandated inspections and there's just a couple areas I'd like to highlight. Our work with code enforcement, police department and the city attorney to identify and mitigate code enforcement violations. As I noted earlier, with our technology innovation, with, with having an ability to store photos and use photos, we learned in working with code enforcement that sometimes we are the first person to, to learn of a, let's say, a hoarder incident due to a medical call. And so if our officers can do a good investigation and take a photo, send that information to code enforcement and many times they can use that information we developed in those photos to, to develop their, their process if they're not, if they're having challenges getting entry and whatnot. Working with the parks department to provide direction for fire hazard mitigation, working with Cal Fire and the Samatay County Fire Safe Council to identify best practices for wildland mitigation, as well as exploring multiple grant opportunities for wildland mitigation. Public education continues to be a major priority of the department. We continue to focus, provide programs in CPR training, CERT, car seat installation, bike helmet safety, smoke alarms, fire and earthquake safety and firework safety. In the past two years, we've increased cooperation with San Bruno schools. Programs include partnerships with the school jurisdiction and the Big Lift program or initiative by reading preschoolers. And additionally, we recently completed the second firefighter of the day event where fifth graders from San Bruno schools are invited to a day camp at the fire department. We also partnered with the American Red Cross and their Sound the Alarm program and conducted a citywide smoke alarm installation program. The department continues to utilize social media platforms to connect with citizens of San Bruno to provide information about services and provide safety information. We use Facebook, Instagram, Twitter and Nextdoor to direct users to the department website for safety and preparedness information, including SMC Alert and Pulse Point, as well as raise awareness for CERT, CPR and advertise events like our annual open house, Fire Prevention Month and Preparedness Month. Leads me to emergency preparedness. We continue to train staff on SMC Alert and Web EOC. We submitted a grant to the San Bruno Community Foundation to purchase shelter supplies so the city would be able to establish emergency shelter operations in the event of an emergency. The plan is for this initiative to be completed in the next two months. We also partnered with community services to conduct a drill at the Great Shakeout in October at the library and we plan to do that again this year in October. At this time, I'd like to discuss our proposed supplemental enhancement. In 2013-14 budget, the San Bruno, San Bruno identified the need for a position dedicated to emergency management. At that time, we determined the best use of those funds was to create a new administrative battalion chief position that would have that responsibility as well as other administrative responsibilities. In May 2014, the administrative battalion chief position was created and yours truly was given the responsibility of emergency management. In August of 2015, the administrative battalion chief position was eliminated and the DC responsible, once again myself, was transferred, reassigned back to shift with emergency management as a collateral duty. In July of 17, I was promoted to chief, the position of chief, and currently the duties of emergency management are being provided at a limited level. Much like we did in 2014, we're proposing a combine, combining multiple responsibilities into this position. In addition to emergency management, the position would be responsible for fire inspections, fire investigations and wildland hazard mitigation. We'd also eliminate the part-time inspector position, which will result in a savings of $46,000. In addition to developing and coordinating training and preparedness exercises that we all know emergency preparedness does, there are some other kind of key, important aspects that I think this position brings. First of all, you represent the city at the Emergency Managers Association, which really is, is the ability to get best practices of what other cities are doing in emergency management. Also the coordination of plans, including the hazard mitigation plan and the emergency operations plan. The hazard mitigation plan was updated in 2016. It's a five-year plan with updates required each year. It's a five-year plan with updates required each year. Without the, without the position, I estimate the cost would have been probably about $35,000 for our city to have hired a consultant to do our portion of the overall county plan. Additionally, our Emergency Operation Plan is in need to be updated to align with the recently updated Operational Areas Plan. The position also played a role in ultimately receiving $140,000 in grants resulting from damage incurred in the severe winter storms in 2017. Also, the previous full-time fire prevention position we had originally was conducted a significant amount of plan review that, when that position was eliminated, went out to a third party. It is believed with this enhancement, we could generate additional revenue in that area of plan checks to be determined in the future. So that's all I have. I'm willing to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for the fire chief?
I have a question. At one point, we did hear that we were going to get a report back on the wildland, working with CAL FIRE. I guess the question is, has there been an assessment of San Bruno, and are there some major concerns or things that we're not doing that we should be doing?
We have, there's, there's a few things that we've done in that regard. We did have CAL FIRE out to meet with us to get, to give us some options. And some of those options they, they gave us were, in particular, the canyon, which is our biggest footprint, let's say, of urban interface. And so there's several things we're doing. We received estimates to clear the fire road leading from the school down to the driveway. We're currently completing a grant opportunity, we're looking at a grant opportunity to fund some of that. Additionally, they directed us to the Fire Safe Council, which, to be honest, we kind of had not been participating in. That is an organization based of a variety of different entities in the county and really kind of a clearinghouse for grant opportunities and kind of shared resources. And so we've engaged with them to look at those options, as well as we are currently looking at working with IT and our GIS people to look at, to develop maps of our neighborhoods and all our urban interface to be able to make those priorities. Obviously, there's a lot, we have a lot of areas that have easements and trees, and so we're looking at ways to best use the data that's available from CAL FIRE to make recommendations based on some sort of sound evidence, and that's, that's a work in progress as well.
Well, the winds we've had the last few days definitely puts the alarms up because it doesn't take much. And then a final question I had was regarding false alarms. So I live near Below Shelter Creek, and I hear it all the time, the fire alarm, the trucks are going up. I know there's a program where, after so many calls, you actually start charging. But with a building like Shelter Creek, is there like, is it based on per building or is it based on per unit? I mean, how does that?
No, it is based on per building, but I believe, I'd have to look at it, I believe. So I guess it comes into the definition as whatever's a false alarm. What we get a lot at Shelter Creek, unfortunately, is not a false alarm, but it's cooking. People cook, they, they, they burn some food in their house, or the pot boils over. And instead of just leaving it confined and airing it out, which would not cause an alarm, they open the hallway door, and that smoke goes out in the hallway, and it indicates a response.
So not really?
So sometimes that's a challenge. We do look at opportunities when we do have multiple false alarm issues, and we do follow up on those to try to mitigate those as quickly as possible. But unfortunately, it kind of gets down to what's a false alarm and what's a
Right. I get you. Okay.
Bad behavior.
And then, in terms of going back out to the, you know, wires, all sorts of fire hazards, are we going back out, are we falling up to actually find businesses, or is it always about, hey, you've got these bad connections? I guess, I guess the concern I have is we don't want another Oakland fire like we had in Oakland. And are we doing our due diligence to say, you know, we have a policy, we follow it, you get the warning, and we get back out there in the appropriate amount of time? And do we have the staff to go out there and actually make sure we're getting in and we're checking those facilities and finding and shutting down if we need to?
We do. We found over the years, we're getting pretty good compliance with our inspections. It's taken a long time of being aggressive, and I'm specifically talking about our multi-residential buildings that, that's one of our mandated inspections. It's taken a lot of years to kind of train those people to make sure that this is what we're looking for. And so, so I would say that staff is a challenge. I think this position will help with that, eliminating a part-time, having a full-time inspector that can do a variety of things, but focus on inspection season to do that. I'm confident we are doing all our inspections, and we're dealing with issues as they come up. So hopefully that answers your question.
Good, thank you.
Other questions? Mark?
Mike. So I'm looking at this command tree, I guess, I don't know what you would call it, on page 128. So this new position, where, where does it fall in, in this tree?
It would be under the, to the left of the fire chief, you have the battalion chief, Fire Prevention and Life Safety Division.
Okay.
It would be under that individual.
Okay. Just wanted to know where that was. Great, thanks.
Full-time, am I making correct?
Full-time, yes.
Chief, on the, on your goals and objectives, we have continued thorough analysis of all apparatus, vehicle, equipment, and facility replacement needs. Specifically on the vehicles at this point for this question, I don't, my perception is, is that we don't have any immediate needs for any replacements?
Not this year, no. Other than that, we do have two, two vehicles, two staff vehicles that are set to be replaced in this budget cycle.
Okay. Because obviously, the engine, the drop.
Correct.
Those are good. And the command vehicle?
Yes.
Is good. Okay. And then, in regards to facilities, which has already been alluded to, I went to 52 the other week and was, I've been there, I've been there a little bit, but aside from going up and, on top of looking at the roof and the hole in it, from the dry rot, from somebody who, in trying to repair it, I guess, went through it a little bit, it obviously shows a disrepair of the station. And also, at this particular shift, we have a female and male persons on duty, and so it also shows me how antiquated it is when we have to slide the sign over that lets you know if it's a female in the restroom or a male, so that they're not, obviously, encountering one another. So obviously, when one, one is in, then it prevents maybe two others from even utilizing the restroom or any other facility needs within there. So I think for what it is and how long it's been there, you folks have done a good job of trying to keep it up and keep it going, so I appreciate that. On the roof itself, is there any plans on that being dealt with? It seems like that roof is not holding up well.
Yes. The issues you mentioned, first was the sewer lateral line, which we fixed. Secondly is the roof, and, and then the gender separation, and then some upgrades to the kitchen we've been looking at. We've been, we've been holding off on some of those for a period of time to evaluate the overall, what, what are we going to do at 52? And so the, what we're doing right now is trying to get an evaluation of the roof to see what, what can we do for two to three years to get that roof to the point if, if we're going to replace the station, or do we need to do a, do a complete tear down? Same as with the, you know, as the issues you mentioned, they're, they're not, they're not ideal, certainly for either gender separation or the fact that, you know, we have commuters now, and a lot of times, people get there early, a lot of times you have from 4:00 in the morning till 8:00 in the morning, you have six people in that station, and one bathroom for six people is just not necessarily adequate. So we do have those issues, we're just, we're just kind of waiting for that whole big picture to reveal itself, what we're doing with, with 52 overall.
Okay. Thank you. Any other things for the chief? If not, chief, thank you, and please tell your staff too that on behalf of the council, we want to thank you and your team for what they do for San Bruno.
I certainly appreciate that, and we'll do that. Thank you.
Community Services Director, I mean, Community Development Director, sorry.
Does he get a minute for his presentation?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm pleased to provide this information in support of the proposed Community Development Department budget. I'm anticipating that Community Development's two divisions, planning and building, inspection and code enforcement comprised of about 14 staff members, will be delivering multiple new significant private and public projects and community quality of life improvements this coming year. Additionally, I expect that other important projects will be moved forward for needed planning entitlements and construction plan checks during the 2018-2019 fiscal year. As I reported to you recently at a city council meeting, development activity in San Bruno continues to be very strong. By the end of the current calendar year, mid-2018-2019 fiscal year, approximately 90,000 square feet of new commercial construction should be delivered, and at least 83 new residential units. This total square footage is associated with 7,000 square feet of new ground floor commercial at the Plaza Development at 406-418 San Mateo Avenue, the 68,000 square feet of new development at the SF Police Credit Union at 1250 Grundy in the Bay Hill Office Park, and approximately 15,522 square feet of new medical office development at 841 San Bruno Avenue. The staff will also be delivering site and exterior facade improvements to the approximate 121,000 square foot Bay Hill Shopping Center, and working with YouTube on a 100,000 square foot tenant improvement at 1100 Grundy, also in the Bay Hill Office Park. These activities have already gone through planning entitlements, so the, the projects I'm describing in this first portion of the report are primarily on the building division side. As, as we move to the planning division side of community development and look at what's in the pipeline or expected to be in the pipeline this coming fiscal year, we're looking at about 500 new residential units and over 520,000 square feet of new commercial development and 34 hotel units. These projects would go before the city's Architecture Review Committee, Planning Commission, and City Council. The proposed residential units are associated with the Mills Park Plaza redevelopment, about 400 units there. 111 San Bruno Avenue, the redevelopment there, the former First National Bank building is down, the site is cleared. We expect a project to be proposed for about 62 residential units on that site. That'll be going to the Planning Commission shortly. And at the former Lee's Buffet site at 271 El Camino Real, there's a proposal for 24 residential units there. The proposed commercial development I mentioned of about 520,000 square feet breaks down in this way. At 111 San Bruno Avenue, the ground floor development would be about 7,700 square feet, again, mixed use with 62 residential units above. At Mills Park, 400 units above, about 50,000 square feet of ground floor commercial. And at 170 San Bruno Avenue, the location of an abandoned service station, we've been having conversations with an architect who's representing a property owner, and we're expecting an application to come in for that site with about 24,960 square feet of area, mixed use, retail on ground floor with office above, about five stories. And the first phase of the Bay Hill specific plan, YouTube is proposing 440,000 square feet of new development in two or three buildings. So again, the total of 520,000 square feet of new commercial development, expected to go through the pipeline this coming fiscal year. We also have the proposed hotel project at 170, I'm sorry, 160 El Camino Real across from the Berkshire Hathaway property. And we've been working ongoing with the new owners, recent owners that took over the shops at Tanfran Mall, QIC, on a possible master plan for reimagining, re-envisioning that overall center. Besides the private development projects I just described, the planning division will be involved with delivering multiple significant public projects, including, we're working on a zoning code update, the Bay Hill specific plan, a climate action plan, a downtown comprehensive parking management plan, a downtown streetscape plan, a new inclusionary ordinance for rental housing projects, and providing support on the Recreation and Aquatic Center at City Park. All of those projects will not only require direct support from the Community Development Department, and in particular, initially, from the Planning Division, but as the projects move forward into construction, there'll be plan review, plan check, building permit issuance, and, and construction inspection. And as indicated in the 2018-19 objectives that you set out for us, there's a real desire to make sure as these projects, particularly these public projects are being considered within our community, there are strong public engagements, I would imagine, with all of these projects. There will be opportunities for public engagement in terms of workshops, pop-up events out into the community, online surveys, and stakeholder interviews. In addition to those public projects, the Community Development Department also provides direct support, staff support to the Planning Commission, and also the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. With BPAC and with the city itself, our staff worked with other staff here in the organization to put together a grant package which was successful in terms of obtaining a grant for over $900,000 for a protected bike lane on Huntington. So that was a project that one of our staff members contributed significantly to and was successful. And again, given the range of responsibilities in community development being planning, building, and code enforcement, including environmental review, I'd like to talk a little bit about In the area of code enforcement this past year, a community reporting module, a CRM, was put in place, essentially a smartphone reporting application. This reporting application has been extremely successful in terms of providing the opportunity for people within our community to conveniently report code violations and for our staff to be responsive to these complaints. Within community development, we've assigned a particular staff person to administer, to monitor the CRM, and to coordinate, to collaborate with other departments, whether it be police, fire, public works, all others, to make sure that these complaints are not only assigned within code enforcement, but if they apply to other departments, they're applied to other departments as well. This year, in terms of code enforcement, and in terms of the smartphone app, about 656 complaints were opened, 563 closed, and a similar number or more were referred to other departments to be addressed. The code enforcement activities not only focus on the CRM portal, there are a total of seven portals that code enforcement monitors, and these portals include CodeTrack, TrackIt, CSB Code Enforcement, which is an email portal, SBComDev, another email portal, a couple of hotlines, one for graffiti, one for dumping, telephone hotlines. So total of seven portals, ways for people to report code complaints or monitor by staff and follow it up by staff. Looking at all portals combined between the period starting in 2016 through this year, 2018, over 2,600 reports were received through these portals, and over 1,880 of these reports were addressed and solved, closed. I've just highlighted some key private and public projects, as well as code enforcement actions that have been or expected to be delivered by the Community Development Department. I should point out that there are all, are also significant additional day-to-day tasks that are delivered by the department staff as well, in the areas of plan check and more routine application processing. For example, looking at the planning staff and planning activities, building permit applications that are received in the Community Development Department that don't require, say, a discretionary approval, don't require going to the Architecture Review Committee or Planning Commission or City Council, but are reviewed for compliance with planning and zoning requirements, are fairly substantial in number and require review by staff. So for example, between January 1st, 2016, and, and June 7th, 2018, about 29 months, 1,000 months, one thousand one hundred and ninety-five building permit applications that required planning department, planning division, I should say, review were received and processed. And within the period of 2017-2018, this fiscal year, I'll break it down for this fiscal year we're in now, about four hundred and twenty-seven building permits were reviewed by the planning staff. In addition to reviewing those planning, reviewing those building permit applications for planning and zoning compliance, there were a large number of more routine applications that were submitted to the planning department for review that went to the Architecture Review Committee and Planning Commission, not large projects, not the major projects I described earlier. Those were minor projects involving use permits totaled during this fiscal year, 1718, fifty-six planning applications requiring Planning Commission or Architecture Review and requiring staff reports to be prepared. In addition to the planning staff, the counter technician staff at the counter was also very active in this past year and past periods. For example, in terms of building permits coming to the counter technicians, to give you an idea of activity, building permits issued in 2012 through 2014, the number was two thousand five hundred and sixty-nine, fourteen sixteen, two thousand nine sixty-five, sixteen eighteen to date, three thousand sixty-three. The counter technicians receive in the applications, they route the applications, they receive comments, they coordinate with the applicants. So at this point, in terms of processing during this two-year period, 1718, counter technicians processed, worked with, three thousand sixty-three building permits. In addition, they also, during the 1618 period, two-year period, received and processed approximately one thousand four hundred and thirteen planned submittals. My point with this information is that we oftentimes talk about the major projects, but the day-to-day activities are significant as well. The counter technicians and the planning staff members also are processing more routine day-to-day applications that take quite a bit of time. Given the workload that is in and expected to come in, and to ensure that we have the capacity in the Community Development Department, I have proposed in this year's budget certain enhancements that have been presented to you in the budget, in the proposed budget. These enhancements have to do with, first, a planning staff position. This is a single, full-time equivalent, limited-term associate planner. The intent with the associate planner would be, this individual would work on those more routine applications. I mentioned the large number of applications that come in for building permits that need to be reviewed to make sure those building permit applications comply with basic planning and zoning development standards. This individual would also provide counter assistance. Also, this person would work on the more routine applications that go before the Planning Commission and Architecture Review Committee. The intent would be that as this individual, again, it's limited term, I would imagine at least three years during this period of increased development activity, would provide the counter assistance, review building permits for planning and zoning compliance, prepare staff reports on minor applications, so that our more permanent staff, our senior planner, our two associate planners, and our long-range planner could work on the public projects and large private development projects I've already described. That is the first enhancement, the limited-term planning position. The second one I'd like to talk to you about tonight is a contract counter technician. In this case, we have three code enforcement officers. The intent with the contract counter technician is that the position would provide administrative support to the code enforcement officers, the three code enforcement officers, so that these individuals can spend more time in the field working on code cases. And this person would provide administrative support to set up the code cases in our TrackIt system and provide general administrative support. In addition, I would have this individual cross-trained with our counter staff so that in terms of absences, leaves, larger counter activity periods, that this person could also perform a broad range of counter activities as well and be a counter technician. So the idea is administrative support to our code enforcement officers and also support at the counter to really provide the service we need when we have higher levels of activity, leaves, and absences. The third position is a contract plans examiner, eight hours a week. This is a position we've had, and the idea with this position is that we do have a demand for, I'll refer to it as express service. People will come in with smaller applications, and instead of queuing up and have to go through a week-long process, it may be a fairly straightforward application that can be reviewed and processed over the counter. In addition, we've had a couple of mandates in terms of electrical vehicle charging systems, and then also in the area of solar, small solar, where the state is mandating that we turn around these applications in a short period of time, oftentimes in twenty-four hours. So the idea is that the contract plans examiner, working eight hours a week, would be able to provide those over-the-counter reviews of both the small solar systems for residential and then also the EV charging stations as well. The next position is in the area of code enforcement. As I indicated, in terms of code enforcement, we have a CRM in place. We've had one of our staff members, one of our code enforcement officers, provide direct administration of the CRM, the community reporting system. And that individual's also provided collaboration with other departments and assignment of code cases to other departments and follow-up. The individual has provided educational materials, some indirect supervision of other code enforcement staff, and we have during this period of time of putting in the CRM, recommended and put this individual on special assignment pay, recognizing that this individual is doing work beyond his code enforcement two position. Given the ongoing need for this service and the excellent service we've been given in this area, we are recommending as our fourth enhancement that this position be reclassified to a senior code enforcement officer. That's the overview of the proposed budget for the Community Development Department. I'd be pleased to respond to any of your questions, and we certainly appreciate providing our services to this community and to the City Council. Thank you so much.
Questions?
I've got a couple. Thank you for that report, David. So one of the comments that I have is I appreciate the deploying of the capability of streamlining the permit process for very routine things, and I think that'll help in a small percentage. Although are there other things that we can do, and can you think of, and I don't need an answer tonight, but some other things that we can do to sort of streamline the process? And it might be that it's better education to the person turning in the application so there's not a requirement for this back and forth, which also takes staff time. And then the other question I have is, does the code enforcement officers have the ability to complete the work they need to in the field? Are they going out there doing the inspection and coming back and using the technology that we have on site? Because every time somebody has to do that, and they can't do their work in the field, it takes time and that process is very inefficient. So have we utilized technology to our best of our ability to actually allow more of that work to be done in the field?
We are moving in that direction. In fact, the City Council has actually authorized, we've purchased, we've downloaded the information we need to into field devices. So exactly what you're talking about in terms of trying to enable the inspectors to do their work in the field, actually download information in the field. We have handheld devices that, at this point, we should be able to issue those to our staff within the next week or so. I've been told that in terms of the needed information to be downloaded, it's been done. We can assign those, and both for our planning staff and for our building inspectors and code enforcement staff as well.
Good. Thank you.
Marty?
Laura, one question. Approving the iPads for the code enforcement officers, but they haven't been used yet?
The information that's needed to download into those systems has been done, they're ready to issue, so within a week they should be issued.
When we have these contract staff, how are we discussing that with our union representation? How does that work? Do we talk to the union and say, hey, we're planning on bringing a couple staff in?
No, typically we don't.
You don't have to?
No. So the contract staff is not taking jobs that would otherwise be provided to full-time staff, they're supplementing. And in the case of the Community Development Department in particular, you've approved several years now the one-time resource. That's not something typically that is of concern to the union.
So this associate planner, is it, did I hear you, it's multi-year?
Yes, in that case, that would be a city position. It would be what I'm referring to as a limited term. So it would be full-time, limited term, given the amount of development activity that we have in right now, I would certainly imagine needing that assistance for at least a three-year period. But in recruiting for that position, the intent would be to let people know that it is a limited term, would be considered for extension by the City Council after a three-year period.
Got it. That's where I'm working currently in the Water District, that they're bringing on contract employees, and it kind of became a little bit of a union thing, so I was just curious on how it was being handled over here. And that's fine. So when these planners work, how closely is the billing back to projects? How does that work? Is it, I remember when I worked here, we had a target for an inspector to bill back at ninety to ninety-five percent. So for this associate planner, what percent are you, do you have in mind that they're going to be charging the projects? Because they're there for the service of that project, not for the benefit of the whole community. It's specific for individual projects, right?
You're right. What I'm anticipating though with this individual is that this person is not necessarily assigned cost recovery projects as you're describing, but rather that this individual is working on applications that have an application fee, doing counter work, doing plan reviews of building applications. The intent really is to free up our more experienced, journey-level staff, permanent staff, to work on larger, more complex projects, and they will be charging their time against those projects. And the city of San Bruno will receive a cost recovery at their fully-burdened rates. So I expect that the associate planner would be brought in at a lower level, doing more routine work, so that our permanent staff, that's more experienced, typically build out at a higher level, and really wanting to do the higher-level work would have the experience of doing the higher-level work, and the city would still be charging against these projects.
So we're gonna, currently where the budget is to bring on, this is for the counter technician for admin support for code enforcement, I'm just concerned a little bit about the timing on that, that if we're implementing the iPads out for code enforcement officers, that that should increase their efficiency? And then there's going to be somebody else we're bringing on to kind of handle part of their work? But I think allowing to see the implementation of that plan of the iPads, to see how that would work first before seeing if we really needed that other person, if there was a delay in that hiring of that person, to see how well the iPads would work in creating cases. And recalling my experience there as a code enforcement officer for a year and a half, I'm just wishing that we had some tool to do that, because it's so much easier once you got, you're doing double the work. You're going out to the site, you're making all the notes, you're writing it all down, and then you're going back to the office, making a file, and so I think the efficiency increase you're going to see with these iPads being used by your staff will probably minimize the need for this assistance from a new person with code enforcement.
I think there's a tremendous volume of code enforcement work and more that could be done. So my sense is that by adding this additional capacity, particularly with the cross-training I'm describing, I know that at our counter, we have times when we have people backed up at the counter. We also have people out because of leave, circumstances, illness, absence, et cetera. To have that individual that would be cross-trained, that could provide support so that we could do even more work in the area of code enforcement, there's a lot of work to be done in that area to increase that capacity, and then also have the benefit of an individual cross-trained to provide support at the counter, I think would be of a tremendous benefit to our customers, our citizens.
Okay, I just thought, I'm just thinking that we're gonna, until we see how well it works with three code enforcement officers, which we haven't had full-time, three code enforcement officers working in San Bruno ever, we've had people working, filling in part-time, and we've had a number of people filling in that third position, but we finally have a confirmed hire of a third code enforcement officer, right?
We do, and I'm really pleased. We have a great new individual in that position. But we have consistently had a contract person backfilling. There have been short periods of time when we have not had that third person, but generally speaking, we've had a contract person backfilling for that position. So we've generally had three code enforcement officers since that position was authorized over three years ago. We have, again, I'll say, we have quite a bit of work in the area of code enforcement. I think that this individual, particularly cross-trained as I described, would be well-used, would be a benefit to our citizens and community, and there would be more than enough work in these two areas to have this person very busy.
My last question for you would be, or is, when you get an opportunity to go back and look at what the cost recovery on our code enforcement officers are, of how much time that they're being able to charge back to when they, when, because I remember when I worked there, if you had a complicated case, you would charge your time to deal with that complicated case. And so if it was two hours of code enforcement time, you'd fill it in in their permit that they would be charged, the person, for that time or for that penalty. So I'm interested to see what numbers our staff are generating.
In the area of code enforcement, the level of cost recovery is low, quite low. It would typically be in more It would typically be in more of an abatement, a formal abatement process, where there would be the sort of action or activity that you're talking about, that we would bill against the abatement. But if it's standard code enforcement, following up with a notice of violation, issuing a citation, speaking with people about what the rules and regulations are of the community, there typically would not be a direct reimbursement to the community. In the case of a formal abatement process, where the code enforcement officer would be following up, and there would be a penalty phase and an opportunity then to charge time, there would be. But generally speaking, there isn't the sort of cost recovery in the area of code enforcement.
So interested in seeing those numbers.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Really quick. David, do we have any other limited-term employees, either in your department or anywhere else in the city? Not in our department, and I can't speak for the other departments. I would say that, just continuing with that question and trying to respond, what I'm noticing, what we're noticing, is that the development activity that's in now and what's in the pipeline, these projects last four years. When somebody comes in the door, meets with our staff, goes through a formal discretionary process, constructed, et cetera, so I'm seeing a longer-term need. As opposed to coming to you each year and saying, we need a contract person in discussing this with the staff, other staff, finance director, city manager, my understanding was that given that this is an expected ongoing need for several years, not just a single year, that it would be more appropriate in communicating this need to you as council members, that it would be more of a limited term. And I think that given the development period, the actions that are needed to take an application through a process to construction, a three-year period would be appropriate.
And so I'm not opposed to it at all. I think it's actually a good way to approach it. My concern was more around what our current practice is, and do we have policies concerning limited-term employees and what benefits they're entitled to, so that we understand the fully burdened cost of that position.
Yeah. So at this point, we don't have any, and we don't have a recent practice with limited-term employees. What we were trying to do with this planning position is to recognize the ebb and flow in planning and development activity, and not to suggest that we would be burdening the organization with the cost of a regular employee in perpetuity without a demonstrated need. So that's first. So the concept is not an unusual one, but your questions, and the question of Councilmember Medina earlier, are good ones that we need to explore further. So first of all, we don't have, we have not recently had any limited-term contract, I'm sorry, limited-term employee positions. Mr. O'Leary tells me that approximately 15, 16 years ago, when we did the cable, the last comprehensive cable infrastructure repilled, that we did apparently hire three limited-term contract employees to build that system. And in fact, it's something that we've talked about, should we proceed with fiber to the home, that is an alternative, is to hire people on employee contract relationships, as opposed to hiring a contract firm. So there are situations, there are a variety of different situations where this may be something that we want to look at, and so your comments are well-taken, that, I guess I'm going to say, we don't have any comprehensive policies. Is that correct, Tammy?
This is not correct. There is Division Two, Fire, and Divisional.
Oh, there is. Okay. Okay. So it's an area that we would want to take a more careful look at. I guess we do have some basic standards, but it's certainly something that would need a more thoughtful policy, let's say.
And because we've been going through contracts, so those benefits and everything are fresh and at the top of my mind, so I just want to make sure that they're all accounted for and we understand what we're getting into.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a good question.
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, no. David, I noticed there has been a lot of activity with residents or from residents about code enforcement, as we all know. And I think some of the problems that I have observed and talked to people about is there uncertainty about what is a code violation and what the city has control over or not control over, like how high are your weeds, or if your house is painted or not, or if it's blue and they don't like, you know, the neighbors don't like blue, or things like that. So I'm wondering if we've looked at a renewed effort to do some kind of education for those kinds of misconceptions or appropriate conceptions of what code enforcement is and what the city really can do or not do about it. Kind of like some of the parking things that we've encountered, or other things like that.
It's a good point, and we do hear those comments. With a permanent third code enforcement officer and the idea of having someone that could provide some administrative support, I say administrative support kind of broadly, this individual could provide support as well in terms of the area of education. So as we just brought aboard the third person, the third code enforcement officer, one of the things that we discussed with him was the idea, as he comes aboard and works for the city of San Bruno, we would like to look at an opportunity for more educational programs to our residents about what's allowed and what isn't allowed. So I think that certainly that's something we'll look at and do, as far as the third permanent person, and as we would envision maybe this individual that would provide administrative support, also helping in the area of information and education to our citizens.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, really quick, on the counter hours, I know right now it's Monday through Friday, eight to five, and in some other jurisdictions, sometimes based on their size, they have timeframes that are not available, whether it's a four o'clock cutoff or whatever it is. Have we looked at the, you know, where the peak demands are, that we have enough counter personnel there, and then if we don't have a high demand, that maybe we look at that? Because obviously a lot's happening, and you're saying at the counter, we need more cross-training and support. So I don't know if that's something that we've looked at, whether to maintain that current structure of the Monday through Friday, eight to five?
Yeah. I think that in terms of the counter technicians, they seem very busy day in and day out, and we do have a log, so we can check that in terms of activity levels and at what times. Our sense is that the counter technicians stay quite busy. In terms of the planning staff, what they do along the lines of what you're discussing is we share that responsibility. So they take a period of time during the day. They can be at their desk doing their planning applications, their staff reports, their research and whatnot, and the counter technicians can call them to the counter on an as-needed basis, so that they're not physically at the counter. They're essentially at their desk doing other work and are called to the counter as needed. That's the planning staff. We can take a look at the counter technicians. My sense is they're quite busy. You're right, some communities do indicate that, you know, it's four days a week, or mornings, or come up with a schedule. We have not done that. We've provided basically service eight to five, Monday through Friday, for the counter technicians, and then our planning staff is there, and they schedule times so that there's typically always a planner as a backup as well.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Connie?
I was just going to say, we did, at one time in the past, have limited counter hours, and we found that, and I believe this predates David's tenure with the city, we found that the demand continued, so that we were even busier during the times when the counter was open. But as the director indicates, we can take a look at that to see if there are actually times where we could manage the counter. It's, I think, most every day, there's, it's, you know, that segment in the middle of the day, from, you know, mid-morning until mid-afternoon is pretty well, is pretty busy most of the, most all of the time with some amount of wait period, but we'll take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you. David, again, on behalf of the council, please convey to staff our appreciation. I know it's been busy, and there's a lot going on, obviously. Before we go, Mr. O'Leary, you have some folks from the finance team that are here. So you look good, and you can make your presentations. Could you please introduce them?
I would look real bad without them. I think you, and this is an opportunity to introduce one person that I think I mentioned at a meeting earlier, but you may not have met. Darlene Wong is the accounting manager, and has been here, I hired her many, many, many years ago. So she's been in several positions, promoted to accounting manager, and is truly an asset, a strong asset for the Finance Department in the city. Esther Garavé-Fernandez is the new Financial Services Manager, started December 1st. I started to put together a list for the city manager the other day of, or thinking about. There has not been one day that I have not assigned, like, five things, staff reports and master fee schedule and the budget. I don't think Esther has had one minute of break since she's been here, which, from my perspective, is great. So, and I don't think it's going to change over the next six months either. So Esther is the Financial Services Manager. And then Charlene, an accountant?
Yes.
Okay. So Charlene, sitting in the front row for the second year, has had a significant and measurable role in the budget development. It was new for her last year, and again, is a great asset, and I'm very proud to work with these three individuals in the Finance Department. Just as we're mentioning, and Connie could mention some of the city manager staff, but I just would want to point out, Robert Wood was here. Robert Wood.
He's here.
Last year, again, because of a vacant position, we asked the Public Works Department to pick up a larger role in the CIP budget development, and since Esther was new, I used the excuse, well, can't we use Robert again this year, and was affirmatively given that opportunity. So Robert Wood essentially does the capital improvement budget, not just for Public Works, but for Parks and Facilities, and is a great addition to the budget team. So I wanted to recognize him also.
And if I could just piggyback on what the director is saying, without a dedicated budget staff, the entire Finance Department organization really works very effectively, dividing up the responsibilities, providing liaisons to different departments, and working very closely among their small team to produce a budget. It really is, we would not be able to produce a budget of this comprehensive scope and detail without that spirit of collaboration and working closely together. But it's so much, so often is the case that you see one face of the department. We had a number of others here earlier in the audience, but we generally have the department directors presenting materials to you. We are very appreciative of the fact that behind each of these capable individuals is another team within each of our departments tasked with the responsibility of developing information, assisting the director in vetting alternatives, and preparing the department for its work together with the Finance Department, with the city manager's office. So we're very appreciative of, I don't know if there's many people in the organization that the budget ultimately doesn't touch in terms of the preparation and the delivery of the items that we...